Recording in progress.
Good evening. This is a Greenbelt City Council work session. My name is Emmett Jordan. I'm serving as Mayor Council. Could you introduce yourselves, please?
Kristen Weaver, Mayor Protam.
Sophie Pope, Council member.
Danielle McKinney, Council member.
Jenny Pompey, Council member.
Amy Neesel, Council member.
Rodney Roberts, City Council.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, information items. Talk about the calendar a little bit as well. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, we hold these council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month to exchange information with community stakeholder groups or to gather information from staff, advisory boards, or residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at our work sessions. Our work sessions are open to the public as well as our meetings, except for executive sessions as authorized by state law so that residents and others can observe councils deliberations. We do strive to provide reasonable opportunities for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered. So we'll pause periodically for public comment. There's a lot included in the work session tonight. So, once again, I will strive to pause every 20 minutes or so. I ask council to keep an eye on the time. Because it's not just about me, it's about all of us together. And, so if you're in the room and you want to make a comment during these times, raise your hand and after being recognized, you can go to the microphone. Please state your name and where you live, more or less in the city of Greenbelt or the area. We need this for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, you can submit a comment using the Q&amp;A tab on the bottom of your screen to submit a written question. Or if you raise your virtual hand after being recognized, you'll be promoted so that you can speak. And if you're watching on cable TV, if you're watching on Facebook or YouTube live streaming, you can send us an email question. And that should go to questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So, the time limit for public comment is three minutes. And, please, stick to one topic related to the question under consideration. We ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others. So, tonight, we've got a lot on the agenda. We're going to be talking about the proposal, the alternatives that are available for dealing with our streetlights here in the city of Greenbelt. We'll be talking a bit about legislative priorities and bond bills. And, also, we are scheduled to have an executive session later on this evening. So, first and foremost, I'd like to acknowledge our City Manager, Josue Samarone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
Good evening, Council. I am doing great, thank you. It's been a good day.
Do you want to introduce some members of staff that are here?
Yes, thank you. Joining me tonight is Deputy City Clerk, Shania Lashie-Mullen, Assistant City Manager, Tim George, and our Consultant, Darrell Carrington, from Carrington and Associates.
Okay, well, fantastic. So, for a while, actually for several years, we've been discussing with Pepco the possibility or our desire to upgrade the lights, streetlights in the city of Greenbelt. And, you know, we had been advocating, I believe it was actually a legislative priority at one point, maybe about six or seven years ago, to upgrade to the LED-type lights. They're more aimable. There's greater control over the various hues, the way the light appears. So, more recently, Pepco actually came back to the municipalities because it wasn't just us on our own that was asking about upgrading to LED lights. It was all of the municipalities who work with Pepco. Pepco actually came back to the municipalities and is going to the Board of Public Works to set up a system whereby municipalities can purchase the light fixtures on top of the poles. And, you know, it's been kind of difficult to try and work through this proposal. Pepco has had some personnel changes in this process. And there's been a lot of discussion, but our City Manager, Mr. Samarone, has been working diligently to kind of flesh out a way forward so that we can actually improve the streetlights and to, at the same time, ensure that there is economic feasibility in doing so. So, Mr. Samarone, you've got a presentation, you've written a memo. You've done a lot of work on this.
I've got a memo, but I think you covered most of the presentation, just what you said. Into that effect, this conversation can be as short as 10, 15 minutes, or we could go on for hours on this topic. I'll distill the points that I want to make tonight to two areas of work. One is what lights we currently have. And, working with Pepco, we learned that there wasn't a good analysis or a good assessment of the streetlights prior to this conversation that was held two years ago. So, over the last six months, oh, over six months, I feel like it's been the entire time I've been here, 13 months now, Pepco launched a field work, an assessment of getting boots on the grounds, inspecting every streetlight, and identifying what kind of light it is, wattage and whatnot. So, we started the process many months ago. We finalized it just a few weeks ago and have determined how many lights are in the inventory, what lights belong to us, should be built to us, and what should be built to someone else. So, for example, we started, we were initially built for 888 streetlights. During the initial assessment that Pepco conducted, Pepco had attributed 1,168 lights to the city. We rejected many of those lights and we reduced the number of streetlights down to 913 streetlights. And that's what we've agreed to accept as those lights being responsibility of the city. Those lights include two streetlights in Berwyn Heights. And if you're wondering, why do we own two streetlights in Berwyn Heights? Well, the entrance of Greenbelt Station is in Berwyn Heights. So, those two streetlights that provide lighting for the entrance are Greenbelt City responsibility. So, we have assets in Berwyn Heights.
They should pay us, we should bill them.
Well, no, no, don't say it. I don't want them to tax us for having assets in Berwyn Heights.
Yeah, I don't want a border crossing every time I have to go home.
You're gonna have to pay a toll.
So, we finalized the process of identifying what the streetlights are, who they belong to, and whatnot. So, we've settled on 913 lights. That's a difference of 25 fixtures. Now, on the surface, that looks like, oh, it's just 25 light fixtures. But, no, it's more than just 25 light fixtures. We saw a reduction of 212 70-watt high-pressure sodium lights. These are the lights that consume a lot of electricity. These are the old-school lights. So, and we saw an increase of 91 street lamps that are, sorry, 110 street lamps that are 100-watt high-pressure sodiums and 91 70-watt LED lights. So, there's some offsets there, but overall, we have been overbuilt for the last three years. And that, we were able to negotiate a credit for those three years of overbuilding to the tune of $87,289.14. That number is going to change a little bit because it needs to factor in applicable tariffs and taxes. So, it'll change a little bit, but it'll be around that number. Which, it's great that we're collecting that money. On the downside, we've been paying, overpaying for a bill for, we really don't know how long. It could be longer than three years. But, we agreed to go back to three years. They will honor any additional credits if we have any evidence that supports we've been overbuilt for over three years. And as good as our records are, and as good as Pepco's records are, we really don't have records that can go back that far. So, that's part A of our conversation. Any thoughts about part A negotiated?
No, this is really interesting, and I'm sure it was very difficult to pinpoint all of that, I can just imagine.
Yes, well, you know, I want to thank the team that helped me with this, and that includes Terry Ruby, Kevin Drisco, Desmond. It's been really team effort, and they all had different pieces of it. Kevin and Terry looking at the maps and determining which are our boundaries. Several of the lights were on the boundaries, on state routes. So, they did that. Where Kevin, it's amazing doing the mapping. So, the mapping that you see there, that's Kevin. Desmond, he's a master electrician. We walked the path of the streetlights, looking at the lights and identifying which ones are being fed from our own meters. Because the inventory included lights that were being fed by electricity from our own buildings, from our own, behind-the-meter connections. And so, we had to figure out which of those lights were, to reject them from the Pepco list. So, it's been a team effort, and I, you know, just feel privileged to have the resources and the talent in those team members to get this work done. But, thank you, Ms. Pope, for the acknowledgement. Okay, so, if there are no questions on part A, I see Conrad and maybe Bill Earlines, I don't know if you guys had any questions on that. Okay. Do you want to take the question or move on?
I'd like to move on for a little bit longer, you said 20 minutes.
All right, so the second part of this discussion is, okay, now we know how many lights we have. Pepco is obligated to convert the streetlights to LED at some point. There's no time requirement. And in terms of paying it, Pepco's not required to pay for it. The proposals that they put two years ago is is they were given the opportunity to the municipalities to buy the lights, upgrade the lights, and they could do their own maintenance. So, that conversation's back on the table. The key question for council is, well, do you want to acquire the lights? Do you want to upgrade the LED lights, and do you want to provide maintenance? Now, the questions can be answered as simply because there are a lot of conditions that, or information that we need. Some of it we have now, and some of it we don't. What we have now is that if we were to acquire the lights and convert them to LED, I am confident that the municipalities, including Greenbelt, could do it faster than Pepco could do it. Just because I think our procurement mechanisms can be faster, we may not have the purchasing power that Pepco has. But, the communities could directly negotiate with contractors and upgrade lights either in one, in entire sections, or one at a time. As either they're failing or we identify key areas that we want to improve lighting on. I've received numerous complaints about poorly lit intersections and poorly lit areas in our communities that we could prioritize to upgrade those lights to LED lights and change the lighting profile. So, we can do it on a rolling basis, or we can choose to do them all at once. So, I think the municipalities have better control over those things.
So, the LED lights will improve, will be brighter, or provide a better quality of light than our current?
They can, they can, because the, one, they can provide a better lighting experience because the, one, it has lower energy consumption, and they have different lighting profiles that you can manipulate, which is different from the high-pressure sodiums. You can buy an LED light, and if you want it to be a sunlight shade or a warm white, you can change those profiles. Gosh, you can even change the colors on these LED lights.
Mr. Roberts?
Just wondering, is there any other options beside the LED? Because, I mean, I hear you saying you can change the profile and all this, but I find them to be very blinding light. If you look up at the light, it just blinds you. And I work with them, you know, in my work all the time. And they're fine if you're pointing it away from you, but you point it towards you and it blinds you. It's not a warm light, puts out a lot of blue light, which is not good for people or the environment. So, I'm wondering if, is there anything out there on the horizon that could be better than that? Because a lot of blue light in the environment's really not good, and like I say, it's a, and, you know, like you see people putting those big light bars on their cars and stuff. And to me, when I see that, it just blinds me going down the road. So, I know there's better quali, there's other types of light that are better quality as far as, you know, not being a blinding light, you know, more of a, you know, something you look at and you're not blinded. So, yeah, I'm wondering about that.
The short answer is, yes, there's other technologies for lighting. The common ones are LED that's being used for street lamps. But, there are halogen, there are all other kinds of lights. The issue, I think we're going to see with lights, is that LED lights have proven to be the most energy-efficient lights.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's fine to be energy-efficient, but if it's not a good quality light, then, you know, what are you gaining? And my other question is, have you identified any areas that we're lighting that we really don't need to light? Because, you know, I've been to other places in the country where they don't, in fact, they don't light all the streets and stuff like that. And, you know, that, personally, I like it like that, but I'm wondering, you know, I'm sure we have some areas that maybe really don't need a lot of lighting. So, have you looked at that at all, or?
No, because the scope of the work at this stage does not involve that level of assessment. I think if we, the complaints and feedback that I've heard from motorists and citizens is that there are areas that we're not lighting. We've had two traffic collisions where poor lighting conditions contributed to those incidents.
Where are those located?
We had one on Ridge Road in South Wade with a young adult, an adult, an 18-year-old was struck by a vehicle crossing the intersection. We had the incident of the three-year-old that the motorist said did not see the individuals. And both of those areas have been identified as poorly lit intersections.
Okay.
So, but in the, should we, should council choose to move forward with a municipally-sponsored lighting program or a four-cities program? I think the, sorry, I don't think, I know that designating light zones or designating zones by whether they're residential, commercial, and what kind of lighting they would need, that will be part of the assessment that would need to be done in setting up the lighting profile for those areas based on the level of lighting that are needed. And that could be done not just based on the type of zone it is, whether it's high-density residential or low-density residential, but we may want to phase in a different lighting profile depending on the time of day. Say, dusk to midnight or 2:00 AM, we may want to have a higher lighting profile and then dim the lights when there's less usage of it. Those are things that we could look at with these LED lights in a more smart lighting system. That's one of the benefits of the smart lighting system is that you could control lights on a large scale. Now, I anticipate that Pepco's town hall meetings are going to talk about the Pepco Smart Lighting Program that they're launching.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protam.
Yeah, and I think, at least my experience with purchasing LEDs for my home, which is not exactly the same ones you would buy for streetlights, is that you can actually, these days, there are a variety of colors that you can get. So, I think, Mr. Roberts, they're not all, I don't know if they use filters over the top of the LED bulbs, but the LEDs that I have, for example, in my kitchen fixtures are not blue, they're a more warm color. So, I think they do some things, I think it used to be, a number of years ago, that the only type you could get were those that had that very blue light. But, actually, at least for home fixtures, and I would think also for streetlights, that whatever they do for filters around the LED, you can actually get the warmer colors in LED lights, because, like I said, I have some in my kitchen. The question I was going to ask was actually related to the lighting profiles, because I think you mentioned in the memo the idea of dimming them. Something that came up actually just with a resident when I was getting dinner at the New Deal before this was the idea of motion sensors on lights. And in some cases, is that something, would, because I think some of the dimming, it seems like, could be done maybe more centrally, although maybe not, but would, dimming would, motion sensors, is that, would all of that require converting to sort of more smart lights? Or would, I just am wondering if, if there's, again, my experience not with streetlights, but with buying lights for my kitchen and getting sort of the smart bulbs that you can dim and that you can also connect to the home thing, so you have voice control over them and stuff, do tend to be a good bit more expensive than even just your standard LED, which are more expensive than, you know, incandescent used to be. So, would we have to convert all the lights to those smart bulbs to be able to do some of these lighting profile things?
No, there would be some lights. I understand that there are lights in the current inventory that would allow for photo-emotion sensor adapters to be connected to them. So, there could be some lights on the inventory that could be upgraded with a module to change the profile or add motion sensor. I think there will be some lights on there. The, we really wouldn't know what the number of lights that would be suitable to do those upgrades until we really get into the minutia of getting our eyes on each light fixture and looking at the models and what their life expectancy is on them. Because I think if we're going to install a motion sensor on a light, we should also know where in the life cycle is that streetlight. If it's going to die out in a year or two, or just a couple of years, we might, we might be better served by making the investment of upgrading the entire fixture and anticipating a 10-year minimum life cycle for that light bulb versus taking the risk on an older light.
And I guess the other question is, is that it sounds like we don't really know how much it would cost to purchase the lights yet because Pepco hasn't given us that information. Do we think we will get that at those November meetings, or are we going to have to wait longer than that?
The, no, we don't have to wait until the November meetings. We can start those negotiations now. Now that the inventory is done, they have an idea of what is the age of that, of that streetlight. The negotiation, so, sorry, the decision by the Utilities Commission was that these streetlights could be purchased based on the type of the light it is, the life left of the light, and then there was a depreciation expense that Pepco took on the lights. So, there's a couple data points that we will need to work out on the, with, on the lights with Pepco to get to the price of, the purchase price of that light. Now, I am of the mind, what I think we could try to negotiate an alternative to that would be, well, let's say we don't want a light. Let's say I don't want to pay for a high mercury vapor light. Say we just say, we don't want that. We'll pay to upgrade the light. So, we'll pay for the removal of that light, and we'll pay for the light, and we'll give you back those lights. Now, what is Pepco going to do with a mercury vapor light? I don't think they're going to be able to do anything with it. So, that would be an alternative that I think that we can talk through. Because some of these lights are old. Why buy them?
We would get some of the benefit of that in terms of if it's a cheaper bulb to run, then we would, the cost to, I know it's not metered, but the cost for, that we were charged per month would be less. But, we wouldn't have some of the advantages of being able to put some of our own smart features and things on it.
Correct, correct. Now, one could argue that replacing, we might want to prioritize the streetlights that have high energy consumption because what we're paying for is the kilowatt consumption of those lights.
Just a couple of real quick points. The reason why we're having this discussion tonight is, this will probably be coming up at the Four Cities Meeting on Thursday. And also, we just have to have a, be able to give better direction to Mr. Samarone and the staff as to how to proceed as we move forward. So, that's why. Number two, if you are curious or interested to see how dimmable streetlights work, we actually have them installed over Tromhills Park. So, if you drive in, you'll find that it's very dark, but as you pull up a little bit closer, the lights come up. Yeah.
I guess I was going to add on to that as a question. Are there some of those in Greenbelt Station as well?
I think we have them throughout the city.
If we wanted to, going to Mr. Roberts's question, I know that they are motion-centered at night, and there also are different levels of lighting, because you can see some of them are set differently. So, if that's an example of people need to see that, there's something that...
We have, we have streetlights, sorry, street lamps that are behind the meter for us. For example, the trail lights behind the youth center that go along the tennis courts and up the trail, up to the elementary school. We could use part of the $87,000 credit that we have to do some upgrades for people can see what's possible if we wanted to have a live environment.
But if we already have that environment someplace for people to see what's possible, we can use that $87,000 a lot of places, I would think, and use what we've got.
And one of the recommendations that I was going to make to council is that the, we put, set aside the $87,000 credit that we're going to get, and we could use that as a contribution towards light upgrades. That way, we don't have to fund the entire thing. We've got $87,000 that we're going to get credit for. And then, month to month, we're going to save around $2,800 just with the new billing. So, I anticipate that our monthly bill is going to be $2,800 less. And that's going to be a cost savings in our budget because we loaded the budget with the expected, the original expected cost of the lights.
Mr. Pope?
Question, what lighting system do we have over Tromhills Park? I thought we had some that would, that they dim, and when somebody enters.
They're motion sensors.
Right, they have motion sensors. Okay, I just want to make sure, I thought I remembered that we installed those.
Now, the, one of the things about those lights is, I don't know to what profile they dim when there's no motion in there, and to what profile they ramp up to. It could be that they go 60 to 100%. And so, we couldn't, you know, the ask for feedback is, well, what do you think of our 60% lighting profile? Because we really don't have those details of those lights.
The motion detectors are not that sensitive. If you drive in a car, the lights will come up. But, if a squirrel runs by or a bat, they don't come up necessarily.
And that's a good thing for the wildlife, right? Deer comes in, you want to start with the deer with lights coming on.
Deer in the headlights.
I set that one up for you.
I want to, I want to make sure the, what we're talking about is owning the light, not the poles, I guess, right?
Yes, acquiring the streetlight fixtures. Those are the arm fixtures that come out. We, of course, not selling the poles.
Would be the arm and the light, but not the pole.
Correct.
Okay. But I also want to say that I think, you know, with light in general and LEDs, that they can appear white, but it is emitting blue light. You know, that you don't actually see, you don't see that blue light, but they do emit it. So, I think that's how it works. But I'm going to double-check on that. I'm going to look that up and just see how that works. Because I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure that's the way it is.
I don't doubt it. I know that there are LED diodes that emit blue light, and there are others that don't, that are engineered that don't. So, I wouldn't be surprised that the LED lights are emitting that blue light.
Point about the arms, as well as the fixtures, particularly the arms, is relevant because they will be our arms. So, if there are other types of things that we would like to hang on those arms, other types of motion detectors or Wi-Fi booster, something like that, that we can do that.
Yes, at the Four Cities Meeting, three months ago, we had a presentation from T-Mobile. And T-Mobile has a smart cities program for streetlights. And some of the modules that can be attached to the lights are noise sensors, pollution, air pollution sensors, traffic counters, communication devices like Wi-fives or cell signals, or not cell signals, but modules that transmit telecommunications.
Let's pause for some public comment, and after that, we can kind of come back. And do you have some more information to share, particularly just in terms of what we, because this is on the agenda for tomorrow?
Correct, this is on the agenda for tomorrow, and tomorrow, it's going to be very much a similar update where things are. I've had a meeting with the administrators for the Four Cities. We discussed that and agreed that it will be premature for us to issue a recommendation based on the last Four Cities Meeting. Because there's a, there are two town hall meetings that Pepco's hosting, one on the 12th, November 12th, and one on November 14th, where they're going to unveil their smart lighting program, their tariffs, and all the associated fees. So, we, if we're, I'm, most of us feel confident in what we think the direction our municipalities want to go. But, it will be premature for us to issue our recommendation without having the numbers that Pepco is going to give us mid-November.
Thank you. Public, Mr. Huh?
Hi, Conrad Hurling, 11B Ridge Road. How often is the effectiveness of the lights, how often does that occur? For example, when I do walk home from here, there are times when the light is bright, and there will be times when it's very dim. And very often, let's say, if the council meeting... And let's say with if the council meeting is a long meeting and let's say you're leaving out here eleven o'clock or later. Very often the light won't be on at all, the light that's by the library. And the other thing about that's attached, that same issue. And when you reported the issue about the inadequate lighting being a factor in the accidents at. Ridge and Southway, that's actually been an ongoing problem for a number of years. But the lights that we're talking about, if you if you go from. Crossing Crescent Road and you're going towards the two roads of the apartments and then over to thirteen Ridge and eleven Ridge. And further towards Ridge Road, there's no lighting in the area where. Of the area that's um it's a a ellipse. As a kid growing up there, we called it the circle, but it was ellipse and there's no lighting there. There was a time. Uh several years ago, about ten, twelve years ago, when there was some lighting. And but people that were taking advantage of the light that was there were doing more than just taking advantage of the light. Drinking drugs and so forth and lots of noise that created, you know, a problem for folks that lived close by. Anyway, so how frequently are are the lights checked on? And if one does have a concern, what is the not to be so specific to be too specific, but. But if you were to call about that, what's the what's the ballpark range of time for the response to that question?
Part of your question is how do we know whether these lights are 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 on and what hours they're on? I we don't know because we're currently not responsible for scheduling the the. Put setting the schedule for those lights and how they transition. So I don't have information to provide for that. That will be a Pepco, a Pepco question. As would the question as who to report outages to is to Pepco. Now, the team administration takes the complaints on the lights and we forward it on to to Pepco and oftentimes we have found that. Citizen concerns get addressed faster if the administration is involved in facilitating. Those complaints. Now, I don't think it should be that way. I envision a world where there's a three one one app for Pepco lights and they just hit a button and say this light is out and somebody gets it and they're. And then it gets on the queue as the next task that they have to do or wherever it falls on the queue. Pepco has made some improvement to their reporting process. They they've created an email address that we can get out uh at the end of this meeting or in the next couple of days of what email address to report. To report the outages and light issues. I have a map, a Pepco map that it's it's a Google map that I can look at every streetlight. In the city that there's a record for and I can click on it and I can look at the light fixture ID and I can report that light fixture. That way, when I contact Pepco, I can tell them there's a problem with this light and I can. Pinpoint to what fixture number it is and it's kind of resolved. We had an issue of maybe three weeks ago with a. A street pole, a street light that was knocked over at a Greenbelt Station and. They came out within a within a day or two to remove the pole and then it was fixed within two weeks.
So the most direct way to respond to a specific. Situation would be to get in touch and you you say that you'll be able to make that Pepco address available so that. That would be the best, the most direct way to say, hey, a light is either dim or it's completely off.
Yes, I would I would do two things. I will. We will publish the email address of the Pepco Streetlights Program where these complaints are to go. So that's the fastest way. That gets directly to Pepco. Conrad, for you and for for residents, if a resident has an issue, I like to solve. I like problems to be solved. So if a if a resident has a has a complaint, we're not going to give him the runaround and say, go contact so and so. If it's something that we can facilitate, we're happy to facilitate that.
That would be helpful if Pepco is taking a while. I mean, it sounds good that they're doing better at that. But that way, people that are not getting a real response, then the city would know and then the city in turn can say. Pepco, we we need better service.
Well, we can check in and get a status update.
You wrote the timeline there. And counsel, I encourage you, you know, I'm sharing the meeting. Sometimes I cannot always be the timekeeper necessarily, so please.
Well, some of that was though also Mr. Somer's response.
And I apologize.
Just to clarify though, so if we take over these fixtures, then it would be our responsibility if a light is out to fix it. So right now it's Pepco, right now it goes to them, but if we go ahead with purchasing the fixtures. Then it would become our responsibility if a resident notices one that's out. Now, I guess if the poll falls over like the or gets knocked over like the one in Greenbelt Station, the poll is still Pepco's. But if the light bulb is out, then it would be our responsibility to fix it, right?
Yes, and in that case, I think that Pep polls that are only set up for a light fixture would probably become our responsibility. Because there's nothing else riding on that pole, unlike a a power pole has communication lines, power lines. They they have other things on it. Those are not are not Pepco's not interested in selling those. But to to do on the maintenance cost, if the city acquires a light, they become the city's responsibility to maintain those lights. Now Pepco has a responsibility now, but we are also are charged for that that response for that maintenance. Yes.
Okay.
So so that light fixture that got fixed is just.
Charged for getting that fixed.
Well, it's part of the expense for that light, right? It's factored into the maintenance is factored into their charge, their service charges. So we're not gonna get a separate bill for it. They're just gonna roll that into their cost of running a light program.
So is there gonna be, so if there's a light out, so then it's gonna be us that's gonna be notified?
If we own the light, yes.
If we own the light, we're gonna put out some kind of link that people can report outages, just like I think Pepco has the same, but this of course would be then.
Yes, and I think the the we can design that program to serve the organization, right? If we hired a third party to do a maintenance, we will. I envision that we will have some sort of reporting mechanism, whether they call in a number, they email a number or they. Do it on an app, ideally an app that can report an outage and then is sent to the contractor or the person responsible for coordinating that repair.
Right.
So I think we're kind of early to talk about what those mechanisms would be because they're subject to design. We need to design those systems.
So just one question about the pole. So the pole is not ours, just the light fixtures are ours, right? So if the entire thing comes down, like it happened in your neighborhood, so we would not necessarily be responsible for the pole, right? But it would be very confusing to people like if you say, well, well, if the pole is down, you gotta call this number, but if the light is out, you're gonna call us. So I think we would have to have some kind of mechanism that people just contact us and then we forward the message on the pole to Pepco.
Yeah, and I think we will quickly figure out those things. If that that pole was out, that was clearly an issue and that was reported right away. If a power pole gets knocked down, oh, that's gonna be a major issue. That's gonna. That's gonna get attention very quickly. There are there are there are just a very limited number of street poles, street. Light poles that are just a streetlight. Those two being being an example, they were put in specifically to light the ramp onto Greenbelt Station. There are other ones where such as the street, the lamps that are in our in our. The the ones that are in our parking lots, you know, those are just light poles.
Which is interesting because I just had a complaint from someone on Brett Place. That in Brett Place, there's like three or four pole uh light fixtures out. And I said, well, I think you have to, you know, you you're gonna have to call Pepco, right? But but that didn't go over so well. So they think the city is responsible for those lights and I said. You know, they're not our light fixtures. So if you see something out, there should be a number on the pole and you can call that number or you can go online in them and report the outage. So.
And there's some that are 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 on HOA private property, private property, just American Legion has has tree lamps. That's theirs.
Yeah, because ours in Bell Point, they're ours.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're they belong to, yeah.
Right, so I think that there's gonna be a a I don't know how much education there be because. I know that there are issues with some of these lights on the HOAs, but they're not coming to us. I think.
No, we know it's our, we know it's ours, trust me.
Now, we do get calls from people who know that there's their responsibility, such as a a street sign, that it's clearly an HOA responsibility. The HOA hasn't resolved it at the timeline that the resident wants. And so they're looking to get it done by somebody else and, you know, we we redirect those calls very politely.
Of course, of course. Thank you.
See, I think we have some other questions. Mr. Orleans.
Bill Orleans, resident. I presume the author of the memo to council dated the eighteenth and the July twenty fourth. Memo to the Four Cities Coalition are either the city manager or the assistant city manager. Am I correct in presuming that?
Uh that's correct. It will be from me.
Later on in the package, there's. Three pages of an executive summary. Entitled, "Streetlight Acquisition and Energy Efficiency Improvement Options to the Greenbelt." Who's the author of the these three pages and the fuller executives? I presume it's a fuller executive summary?
Uh yes, so the there's some background to this and I presented in a previous meeting about this. Uh Mr. Linette, this is Mr. Woodbury, a CEO from.
And that's the signature on several pages previous, I presume.
I I'll get that information to you. So when I started looking at this issue, I needed to have. Some validation of the information that Pepco was giving me. I had two options. I could put out a RFP or a contract for a a either a feasibility study or or, you know, a broader research. On the streetlights that we have and what the cost will be or we overbuild and whatnot. I found through through connections that the mayor made with previous state delegates and. The Utilities Commission representatives, we found a a gentleman that kindly offered to. Review the bills, gives us his professional opinion on what I was looking at. And so that's where that executive summary comes from. It was a a a very affordable, seven hundred fifty dollars, very affordable. Way of getting the information that Pepco was providing validated. So for me, it's I had a deficiency in the knowledge base and that expertise. I wanted to get it in the fastest way I could get it in a way that was cost effective and that's how I fixed that issue for myself. So this information was mainly meant to be for me to understand what I was looking at and what potential cost savings, potential overbilling. What I learned from this process was before Pepco and the city determined that we were overbuilt, I had an expert tell me. You should look at this closely. You're getting overbuilt and they asked that they did their best case estimate for how we were being. Overbuilt and potential savings that an LED conversion would do for us. So it gave me that additional validation so that when I had my negotiations with Pepco. I went in informed or inform as best as I could and I was not relying a hundred percent on Pepco. Now, that's not by no means an indication that I distrust Pepco, but I needed to do my own homework and go and prepare to this.
I appreciate your thoroughness, Mr. Somer.
Okay.
So the author of this, the fuller report and this executive summary is that Mr. Streberry or Stuber?
Woodbury.
So the then the recommendation, the conclusion of the executive summary summary. Acquisition of the system and conversion to LED technology with part-time dimming and clearly is clearly the best overall option for the city. That's his recommendation.
Yes, and it there's a similar recommendation that was made by the Tango Lighting Group. Which is a a consulting firm that was hired by Hyattsville to do a feasibility assessment for Hyattsville. But the city had the opportunity to contract Tango Lighting. At the time, we we hold we decided to hold off on that because we felt that we had enough information to continue the conversations with Pepco. And figure out our next steps.
Well, my general question is this. I think there should be more discussion before council would accept this on agenda for action. These tables raise questions, but this such a question I would have is in whose interest is this? Pepco is selling to the city. I don't see the price in here, selling to the city the right to pay for the maintenance of streetlights in the future. I don't know what the PSE's rules are, but it would seem to me that any utility providing a service to anyone in the state, but including municipalities. If that service is it disabled for any reason, whether it's just worn out or it's been hit by a car or something. That profit-making entity is responsible for maintaining levels of service appropriate to its contract. And and it's and it's regulation by the state. I don't understand what why this is, it may well be, I welcome being convinced, but I don't understand why this is in the interest of Greenbelt or any other municipality. While Pepco is making substantial profits from providing this service. And will continue because they're to make profits, they're not gonna have the responsibility for maintaining the that which they are now required to maintain, whether they do it well or not, I can't judge. I have a further discussion before council would put this up for action.
And and I'm certain that there would be further discussion. There's you raise excellent questions and there are very simple answers to it. That Pepco will happily maintain the lights, but they will need to get paid for it. And that is one of the proposals, the a proposal that we expect to receive at the November twelfth and November fourteenth meeting is. What is that tariff rate for Pepco to continue to maintain the lights and do the LED conversion? That is gonna be the central theme of that town hall. How much do they want to charge for those lights? I was told that I will get a copy of their tariff application when they when they file it. I have not received it, so either it hasn't been filed or I will soon get it. But the tariff application is going to indicate what that rate will be for upgrading the LED lights and maintaining those lights.
Well, thank you. Mayor Portem.
Yeah, well, and I think I think I think we actually have had, this is at least this. When we've talked about it, the Four Cities, we've also also had other work sessions on this topic, so I think we actually have had already had a lot of discussion. But I think the benefit to the city is that if we take the effort to change the LED lights. We are saving even more money than we are now, having reassessed the inventory. We are saving money on power, so that's a benefit to the city. We are not spending as much on power. And I think the other benefit is we are able then to control some of these lighting profiles as we were talking about. That right now we don't have control over that, but if we own the fixtures, then we could dim them, we could add add motion sensors and do that sort of thing. Or some of these other smart cities things. So I think, Mr. Orleans, although I can't see you really behind the podium right now. I think those are the advantages is that overall we save money and we get to do some things that are of benefit to our citizens with the light fixtures.
We have control.
More control.
And we save money. So, Mr. Somer, do you have some additional information or just? I really want to kind of get to the heart of in the discussion tomorrow to make sure that council is in line with you. I'm not sure exactly how the discussion is gonna go. Was it New Carrollton or was it College Park that put it on as a agenda item?
We did.
We did.
Oh, we did. Oh, okay.
Um and and also Luisa Robles, our sustainability coordinator, also points out, we also reduce our carbon footprint. We save money and reduce our carbon footprint, so these are all good things.
So and Mayor, to your to your question, the. The conclusion that we're coming around to is that the quicker that we convert the lights to LED. The faster we're going to generate savings, the faster we're going to beat our carbon footprint reduction goals. The LED conversion, they can pay for themselves just on the savings of the energy consumption. That's the central theme that we're going to see, that we saw from Woodbury, from Tango Lighting and that we're going to see from from Pepco. That there'll be that these light upgrades can pay for themselves and the savings from the energy consumption. So I I don't think there's any doubt about about the need to do that. The issue ahead is. Do we want to wait for Pepco to do it on their schedule and at their rate or do we want to do it ourselves?
If do we want to do it by ourselves or do we want to do it with the Four Cities or other municipalities? So you you mentioned the the break even point, recovering the investment and I believe you projected that at two, three years?
The the. I would need more information to do that. I think we we're looking at, you know, at one point there is a four year, a four year. Break even point. We if we layer in the eighty seven thousand dollars credit that we haven't used that towards the purchase and upgrade of lights that can reduce that that. Payback period. If we or if we secure funding, grant funding through soul or 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 bond bills, we can reduce that payback period on on the investment. So there there are other ways, there are ways that we can. we can pay for this.
Mentioned, we know that Hyattsville has been moving in the same direction, only a little bit ahead of us. Have they pulled the trigger? Have they actually started?
They have not. I was in contact with Tanco just a few weeks ago, and they're also waiting to hear what Pepco is going to release.
Sense.
Yeah, so that, to me, is a sign of a validation that waiting towards November, it's the right step to do right now, because Hyattsville entered into a contract, into arrangement with Tanco Lighting a while back on this program. And they're not, they're probably ahead of us, further ahead than we are, because they've been able to work on this much longer. But they haven't yet purchased any lights and done conversions, from what I understand.
Thank you very much. Is there some additional information you want to share?
On the lights? No, I think we're, we may have a, we may have a proposal on lights for, as part of our legislative priority and bond bill request. We put it in our application last year, and there's too much unknown on the streetlights to get, to get support. But it's something that's affecting all the communities in the Pepco territory, which is not just Prince George's County, but more than that.
Well, thank you. You've done an amazing amount of research, and you've pulled it together in such a way that it's easy to comprehend, maybe not easy, but it's comprehensible. And I certainly am feeling like taking over the lights, light fixtures, and poles purchasing will be a benefit to the city in really not, not a very long time at all, three to four years, so.
I appreciate the compliments, Mayor. I hope I can quote you in my upcoming evaluation.
We'll see.
Thank you.
Five hundred.
Council, any questions, thoughts? Okay. Well, let's go ahead and move to the next section of the agenda. And we're going to be talking a little bit about legislative priorities. We're going to be talking about bond bill requests. And we're going to actually get an update from our legislative advisor, Darryl Carrington. Darryl, why don't you, why don't you kick things off and-
Would it be a perfect for Darryl to join us?
Yes, we've got a seat for you. Did you give him a special seat?
He's got the one in the middle, right next to, right next to the chair.
I would, no, I would just swap it out, swap it out for the one beside it.
Yeah, that one may be sunken a little bit.
It's low. So if you don't want to sit in, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, Darryl Carrington, here on behalf of Carrington Associates LLC, and we're very happy to be here. My, I sound loud. Okay. So, we had a meeting earlier today with the city manager, the assistant city manager, to look at our legislative priorities for the 2025 legislative session, but also to discuss some of the things that we're looking at with the county council as well. So over the last several weeks, hopefully you've all been receiving updates from the council, letting you know about some of the upcoming work sessions and hearings, some of the bills that are moving forward. I know that we have a couple of priorities that we're looking at, so we are very, very happy about the progress so far with the stop sign monitoring bill that was actually, had a hearing yesterday, and an amendment was added by Council Chair Ivy to make it an emergency bill, meaning we'll be able to have that bill enacted as soon as the county executive signs it into law. So that's, that's quite helpful. I'm not quite sure where we are as a, as a body in terms of drawing up legislation so that you guys can implement your own program. But that is being fast-tracked, so anything that the mayor and council would like to do to start advancing that type of legislation, you are open to do that. We also talked about the MML priorities that the city has, has already put forward. So we've talked about the amusement tax, and also, hopefully, I think this is now going to be the fourth year that we're working on the, having a non-sworn personnel be able to review the images. I think that we all know that it is a waste of our sworn person's time to sit in front of a monitor and like, you know, just click a button. Moreover, one of the things that we testified to last year was one of the major issues that they had in Baltimore City with the overtime scandal, was them saying that they were actually reviewing images. So that's just another reason why we really need to eliminate that from happening. And as I said, hopefully, you know, year three or four of a, of a building in Annapolis is usually like, kind of like the magic spot, so it's either going to move forward, or this idea, you need to, you need to forget about it. We're not going to do it. So I think this is something whose time has come. The opposition, to be quite frank with you, it's very difficult to understand the opposition to having non-sworn personnel do a thing that we can literally train, you know, anyone to be able to do, quite frankly. We also talked about, and I'm very excited about this, planning an advocacy day for both Annapolis, for the City of Greenbelt, and also for Upper Marlboro. I think that would be an outstanding idea for you all to, for us to have a day in which we meet with certain council folks and certain department heads. I know that you all have full-time jobs and other things, but if we coordinate this thing well ahead of time, I think that this is something that we can coordinate amongst ourselves. As far as Annapolis, my suggestion to our clients is always to have your advocacy days early in the legislative session for multiple reasons. First of all, your elected, the General Assembly isn't very busy in the first two to three weeks of the legislative session. It's still all like, you know, what did you do for summer vacation? What did you do for summer vacation? Everybody's really nice to each other because we haven't had an opportunity to have bills go the other way. So the other thing I think is important about going in early is that you get to lay out your legislative priorities to the elected officials early in the legislative session, and then your lobbyists, me, I get to reinforce those things constantly over the course of the session, every time I run into them in the hallway, or see them in another meeting. Like, hey, remember that thing from Greenbelt? Like, where are we at with that? And so that's a really good thing. Obviously, MML does, it's, you know, their night on the first evening of session, but that is, people really aren't focused on the business of Annapolis at that particular, you know, in that first night. So that's why I think it would be really advantageous in the second or third week of January for us to, to plan our advocacy day, and I'll work with the city manager and assistant manager in coming up with dates for you to look at. But I would like us to do that sooner versus later, to get that on the protocol calendar, so folks see that there.
I think that's a great idea. Yeah, as elected officials, I think that we have opportunities to interact with our delegates and senators, not just in this district, but, you know, throughout the entire state from time to time. But you mentioned working with the department heads, and that's not something that we necessarily have an opportunity to do quite so much of, so I think that's a great idea. Do you think the best time of day for that, is that in the morning, in the evening?
Well, I think that's something we have to discuss amongst ourselves, and, you know, maybe not right now, and we have to make that decision, but I think that that's something that we, we certainly like, maybe, you know, we poll the council and like to figure out what works best for your schedules and, you know, childcare. I mean, there's a myriad of issues that everyone will have to contemplate when we're doing that. Now, as far as the Annapolis Advocacy Day, everyone knows that that's going to be a daytime, you know, activity, and, you know, you may have to take a day off from work or something like that, but it is certainly worthwhile. And what we will do is not set, we will also try to make sure that we set meetings for you on that day with selected lawmakers. I mean, you have a great relationship with your, with your state delegation, but other members of their committee that may need to be persuaded for something that we're looking to get done, that would be a great opportunity for you to meet with these other, with these other folks. And that's a good pivot, talking about testifying and the like. One of the things that we're going to try to do is to make sure that we help prepare you all for testifying on bills that are of importance to you all. We will try to identify early on what bills at council level and in Annapolis that are of particular interest to the city. You know, as I said, we know the MML priorities that we're going to be working on, but there will be some other things that come up, for example, transportation-related issues. There's a three-point-two-trillion-dollar appropriation sitting in Congress waiting for the election to end, to talk about the FBI relocation. So there are, there are, there's a myriad of activities that we're going to have to look at that are interconnected with that FBI move. So we're going to have to really keep our eye on, on several different areas as we're moving forward. Obviously, I expect to see the bill that both Delegate Williams and Senator Washington has advocated for the past couple of years, and with respect to the MAGLEV. So that bill, you know, to oppose that will be, will be introduced again, I'm pretty sure of. There were a couple of other priorities that were shared for me from your retreat, which I regret that I couldn't be at. We had another commitment with the Maryland Association of Counties. We were talking about getting re-engaged with juvenile justice reform, and one of the things that I had shared with the city manager, assistant city manager, is that there was a bill passed two years ago called the Enough Act, and I apologize for not knowing the acronym of hands, but it was like empowering neighborhoods, unions, and the like. So basically, it's having a holistic approach with neighborhoods, nonprofits, a faith-based community, and everyone working together. The governor committed fifteen million dollars to the effort. It's been reauthorized. It's going to be refined slightly. And for Prince George's County, our community action group is called UCAP, United Communities Against Poverty. I will make sure that I get them connected with the, with the city to talk about some of the things that they're doing around the Enough Act, and how to plug, you know, and how we can get more plugged in, like maybe with our youth services, or and people of that nature, so that making sure that that activity is occurring and there's actually resources being committed, where the city may not have to actually put money into it, but just, you know, having personnel participate. So we will make sure that you're well-versed on that. There was, there is actually a bill that Councilmember Dinoga has put in with respect to noise. I see there was a, you know, someone spoke about banning modified mufflers and noise controls and the like. So it's not perfect. There's going to, the bill is calling for actually having monitors in, so we are going to be recording certain decibel levels and the like, but this is a process. So you're going to have to have certain baseline information before you're going to be able to petition to get actual legislation done to, you know, to affect this. But there have been bills in Annapolis over the last several years. This has become a real major problem for communities. You know, in the middle of the night, you're hearing these modified engines and, you know, rrrr, big, you know, and, I mean, we all know. So this is something that's certainly an annoyance to our, to our residents, and it is being looked at. It's just very difficult. There's, there's, you know, a lot of opposition from the car groups and things of that nature. So hopefully, we've only been about a year and a half or two into that, so hopefully, you know, we're starting to get into that three, four-year period with this as well, where we'll get some real activity, because everyone's, any elected official, your constituents, are talking to you about the problems that they're having with all the, you know, the noise from the mufflers, in particular, the mufflers and the racing cars. And it's also dovetails into the whole aggressive driving since COVID's been around with the, you know, the speeding and the like. So we're very pleased to see that that public safety aspect is something that's a focus for the General Assembly. We were also talked about food-
Local bill for the General Assembly?
Well, Councilmember Dinoga has the local bill right now, which is, like I said, is a noise-abating program, but when you look at the details, there's a lot of monitoring and the like, and it's just very difficult to put some of these things into writing. So they're doing, they're doing a really yeoman's job in trying to work through the details of all of that and get us a pilot that's constitutional, that we can get the baseline information that we need to have, you know, another program in the future. Let's see, and there was a talk about requiring compostable takeaway utensils. I think that that's a wonderful environmental issue. You know, I don't know that, I don't know if you had any lead sponsors in mind, but we should, I will certainly talk with the Chair of Environment and Transportation. He's a big environmentalist, and to see where the General Assembly's appetite may be for something like that. And of course, coordinating with our state delegation, because any bills that we want to see, I think that we should always offer them the opportunity to be the lead sponsor in any of those initiatives, or to make a recommendation to us as who they think should be the lead on an activity like that. And I know I'm talking very quickly, so let me slow down a little bit and ask anyone if they have any questions. I am that clear?
No, no. So, you know, one of the, one of our priorities for quite some time is to have some enabling legislation that would allow municipalities with the capacity to manage some of their zoning authority. We'd like to have a little bit more, if not all of it. So I know bills went in last year, and I believe the City of Bowie and College Park and Hyattsville are all kind of interested in that. So what do you, what do you think is the best approach to try and move that forward? Incrementally, or should we just go for the whole thing and complete zoning authority, land use authority?
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Excellent question, and, you know, our firm also represents the Prince George's County Council, so we were actually there for the hearing, and the City of Bowie had an impressive showing. The city manager was there, the mayor was there, staffers with binders. It was, it was quite impressive. The, you know, we've had the discussion here before. I imagine incrementally, it's going to probably be something like, you know, where they may give you a little bite of the apple, and then you can come back and get another bite later. That may be your best approach, going in for, you know, both barrels. That's probably not going to work. I realize, remember that a former council member, Franklin, was working on compromises. He really, really digs into the land use issues, and he knows them very well. And so he was trying to work, you know, really trying to work with the city attorney for Bowie and like to come up with something to give, you know, very sophisticated towns like the City of Greenbelt and Bowie and College Park, you know, the zoning authority that, you know, some others like, you know, Laurel has. So, you know, that's, that is going to be an uphill battle, because as you know, as being a legislative body yourself, it's hard to ask legislative bodies to give up authority. Was that diplomatic?
Good deal. So we had a work session, and we've had some discussion about potential additional legislative priorities for 2025. We need to work on these and flesh these out, because at some point in the next month, we'll be actually presenting some ideas to our delegation, to our senator and our delegates, along with the other municipalities in District 22. So that, what's the date on that?
December 3rd, Tuesday, December 3rd, five to eight-thirty. And then-
Dinner, if that'll be here.
Where is it? It'll be at the American Legion.
American Legion.
And the, in the first thirty minutes, hours, the, will be the social hour.
So we're going to, we need to kind of work up to that, and it's actually good being able to sit with you face-to-face. I mean, Mr. Carrington, I see you around at social events, but we don't really get to, to go in depth on legislative priorities. So I don't envision this discussion to be the be-all and end-all, but we are going to have to work on this a little bit to, to get our, our priorities straight, figure out what to, the top three or four, because you can't really do a whole lot with ten or twelve. I mean, you can, we can have them, but as far as communicating them and really pushing, we need to kind of narrow it down to maybe four or five.
And, and Mr. Mayor, a reminder, last year, there were a lot of commonalities in the municipalities in District 22. So the, we took an approach of putting together the joint priorities, and I'll list those because I realized that I, we didn't put them on this sheet. And we listed joint priorities affecting all the municipalities. What are the things that we think are going to have universal benefit to all of our communities? And those were juvenile justice reform, and ideally primarily funding juvenile justice reform. It's one thing to say, no, we don't want these kids in a punitive environment, and not put any money behind it. Affordable housing, mental health and addiction support, environmental sustainability and justice, infrastructure and state road improvements, regional economic development and growth, and grants for recruitment and retention of police officers. Those were items-
Firefighters.
Now we need to add firefighters. At the time, we were just primarily talking about police officers. So these were themes, joint priorities, that District 22 municipalities recommended as something we wanted the delegation to work on for the benefit of all communities.
Portem.
Yeah, well, and I guess I was going back a little bit to some of the county, county bills, I think. Well, Jay Davis points out that November twentieth is the deadline for prefiled bills, so that will be before-
November first for the General Assembly, October twenty-second for the, for the county council. It's, it just passed.
Okay, so it's actually earlier than, than what Ms. Davis has here, but, but so that's all going to be, I mean, that's coming up pretty soon. November first is not very far away, but that's all-
That's just for prefiled, Councilman Vice, Portem. That's just, if a council, if a state delegate or senator wants to prefile a bill, meaning that they want to have the bill available to be introduced on the first day of session, the deadline for filing those bills is November first. However, the deadline for introducing bills for the Senate, I think it's going to be February seventh, and I think the House is the ninth. It depends upon who has a budget for, like, every other year, it switches who gets the budget. So last year, the Senate had the budget first, so we're- So last year the Senate had the budget first, so we're in a nine even year. So last year it was the Senate that had the budget first, so this year the House will have the budget first, so they get a couple of extra days to get their, their introduction. And so our legis, our delegation can put bills in for us up until February 7th of, of next year. And, and, but I do, I will be remiss if I don't say this, for your bond bill request, and I see them listed here and I didn't mention them yet, but for your bond bill request, you need to talk to your delegation yesterday. People are making their decisions as to what they're going to be funding. Every Senate delegation gets a certain allocation and then they decide amongst the delegate and the three, I'm sorry, the senator and the three delegates, which are their priority projects and how much money they're going to give to each thing.
You said that figuratively, not literally.
I would have liked you to have had that conversation with them last week, but as soon as possible. Do not wait until December to have those conversations. You can wait until December. I, I mean, I would rather have conversations starting, you know, get them thinking about things. Now, although certain things like MAGLaff and whatever, they already know. But for your bond bill request, I would get that in as soon as humanly possible.
I worry, I, you know, our delegation, sometimes our center, we may actually be waiting for them to tell us what they're going to find. So we need to get our ideas out there because they, they may not always be aware of the full range of aspirations and needs that we have and we need to articulate them.
Well, I wanted to, what I wanted to bring up was, we had talked at, it was brought up actually as a, as a petition at our regular meeting last week, the, the bill about shopping cart thefts, which I looked up and it looks like it, it, I'm trying to figure out what the bill is, something about it yesterday, it says will be introduced before the full County Council Tuesday. I'm, the sentence is not complete in this reporting, but so something happened yesterday, but they're saying that there's going to be, it was, I guess, introduced yesterday.
And referred to committee.
And, and then there's going to be a hearing on Tuesday, November 19th is what this, this listing on the PG County Council thing says. So if that's something, I think that's, that's one that I'm not sure that it is one of our top priorities, but it is something that would have a pretty strong impact on the co-op, for example. And I think Dan Gelati, I've talked to him a little bit about it, and while he understands the, the challenge of the, the abandoned shopping carts, I think that his perception as a, as an owner of a grocery store with shopping carts is that the bill is not, would be very difficult and would be a very high burden for him as a small business owner and might not even solve the problem and is really addressing, and I think he sent, is punishing the business for the behavior of the individuals taking the carts and not necessarily directing the, and also might not even be effective. So I don't know if that's something that, well, well, I'm not sure we want to add it to our priority list, that is something that as a council, we could decide to write a letter, we could decide to go to that hearing. So I just wanted to, to mention that because that did get, get brought before us as a, as a petition last, last regular meeting.
That, there's, the commentary from the, from the co-op owner in the reading of the bill and the synopsis and the, and the analysis that I sent to you all, it's pretty much, it does appear that the, the property, the owner of the, of the establishment is the one who will be fined if their carts are found to not be there. You know, we didn't have a lot of input in drafting of this, but I certainly believe that this is the appropriate time to weigh in, to write your letters to the, to the bill sponsor. I believe this is Councilwoman Fisher, who's the, the lead sponsor for the bill. We have over a hundred and nine bills, so it's hard to remember each sponsor for each one of them, but I think that was, I think that was Councilmember Fisher's bill. And I've, you know, she is someone who you can work with certainly, and if you have some questions or suggestions to make the bill better, she's more than willing to listen to those things. We just should get that to her as soon as possible so that they can include these things in their deliberations and draft any amendments that might be necessary.
Yeah, and I guess I don't know what we want to, I mean, we already have a really big agenda for Monday. And so, and if the, the hearing is on Tuesday, the 19th, that's, but I'm not sure, November 19th, yes, but, but I think we, we've been talking about what the, whether we will be, because of the timing of MML and NLC in November plus Thanksgiving, it makes having two council meetings in, in, in November a little bit challenging because of the, and a holiday, I guess the other factor is the holiday on Veterans.
A little Thanksgiving thing?
Well, no, actually, the, the bigger problem is Veterans Day is a Monday. And because Veterans Day is a Monday, that, that impacts our regular council meeting in a way that it doesn't usually because it hasn't, it's been a while since it's been on a Monday, you know, it's been on Thursday or Friday anyway. But so I don't know what other council members think, if that's something that we want to see about drafting, have something on the consent agenda or just on the consent agenda to approve sending a letter and then we work out the details of the letter later. Maybe that's, maybe we can, we can add it that way, just so that we get it formally approved if council agrees that that's something we should speak out on. But, but I'm not sure we have time to really work up a whole letter by Monday.
Well, we could certainly draft a letter, but the question is, you know, if, if shop owners like the food co-op are telling us that it would be a burden, I, I guess, you know, we really have three choices. We can support something, we could support something with an amendment, or we could not support something. So, I mean, this is a, this is a nuisance. You know, I see a lot of shopping carts around and I know that many retail establishments have some sort of sensors.
Where you can't take it so, you only take it so far and it stops.
Yeah, well.
They're saying that we should draft a bill and support even though the food co-op is in opposition.
No, I don't think, I think if anything we support with amendments, I think recognize that it is a, that it is a nuisance, but that the legislation would be overly burdensome on small businesses and might not solve the problem. So I think I would encourage trying to put together, I, I think one of, one of Dan's concerns was that, that he didn't feel like business owners had necessarily been consulted in the provisions of that, of that bill and that there might be, if, if a task force were gotten together of some of these, these owners of the shopping carts, they might be able to come up with some more creative solutions. Because he pointed out, it's not like these shopping carts are cheap. It's not like the people, it's not like the grocery store owners want their shopping carts walking off either, but punishing them with a $2,000 fine for some of these things, like they're also losing money when they have to replace the shopping carts. So they are motivated to, to try to come up with a solution, but what's in the legislation might not be the, the best way to go about it. So I don't know, it's a fairly fine line of recognizing that it's a challenge and that they are a nuisance to have all these shopping carts, but not thinking that the provisions of the, the bill as proposed are the best way to solve it. I mean, that's sort of the way I would probably phrase it.
So it's referred to committee, so likely they.
It's going to be, it's, so there's still opportunities to amend.
Task force or consulting with us. So you think this is likely to move?
There is a, there's a lot of, as, as everyone has just said, that you've noticed the activity of carts in places isn't a nuisance. And so it's not just City Greenbelt, it's, it's in many other places that it's a nuisance and the council is trying to address it. So I, I do believe that they would like to try to get something done this session. They have a big agenda, as you know, you'll see from the analysis I gave you of all the bills, resolutions and letters and briefings that they've been doing, but this is a priority. I believe it's really important for you all to weigh in, but more importantly, you might be able to talk to, you know, why doesn't the co-op actually talk to whoever owns this one, that one big shopping plaza where the Safeway is and Dollar, whatever. I mean, all of those property owners and there should be, I mean, not all, but, you know, some of them should certainly be concerned with.
Buses and, you know.
Precisely, so there's strength in numbers. So you get these retailers to, to talk to one another and, you know, maybe take some of the burden off of you all to, you know, have them do this and, and let the business community unite and, and work together on this particular issue.
Silky Pope?
Yeah, because if you, you know, if you take a shopping cart from the property, it's theft. You're stealing the cart.
Yes.
Because it's not used, right? So I think I, when I read the, the letter from, from the co-op manager, I agree with him and I think there's many other smaller stores, like I know Aldi has their little coins, you know, the little quarter and people really want that quarterback. But they, yeah, it works beautifully, right? But I do see people walking around with a shopping cart and they, they, you know, go the other direction. And it's just, we have to find a nice, we have to find a good balance. And I think the shop owners need to be consulted before, before, you know, I'm putting out a bill like this.
And you, you may not like hearing this, but I've heard anodyllary from some shop owners, question like, well, where's the baskets or, you know, where's the cart? It's like, well, you know, since they did the, you know, the back taxing and like, like people will just like push their cart and just keep on going if they live, you know, in walking distance, they'll just walk home with the cart or with the, you know, the bag just because they don't have bags and they don't want to pay for it. So, you know, there are, you know, other issues that are coming into play here as well with, with, with this and, you know, certainly, you know, speaking with you all, you know, certainly it, it's hard for the business owner to see how this should so, you know, fall solely on their shoulders in terms of fines and, and the like, but that's, that's the way it seems, is the way the bill is written.
The business owners are already struggling, you know, they have to raise, they keep raising their prices. I mean, it's, it's really, they're really in a difficult situation already. And now we want to punish them for some, for some, for actions that others, you know, oppose on them. So I think there, there has to be a discussion because I would not be able to support this bill at this time.
Yeah, also Jay Davis has her hand raised and I suspect she wants to speak on this topic if we want to allow that after council members.
If it's on this topic, I have another topic.
I'm going to guess that's what she wants to talk about.
Yeah, I was just going to say, my comment that I wrote on this was that the legislation seems punitive and not corrective. So like it's not correcting the behavior.
Right, right. No, 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 there's no behavior change.
So I think that that's something that we need to focus on in our, in our draft comments as well. Like we need to correct the behavior and not just punish businesses for, for not securing their carts well enough or.
And I don't know, I mean, do, you know, Councilwoman Self, I mean, you, you made a good point. I mean, people really do want that quarterback, same thing in the, you know, when you're in the airport, you know, you want to get your coin back. You know, maybe that's a suggestion, maybe, you know, come, you know, everyone goes that route, this way you're putting it on the customer and not on the business.
I mean, it's, it's, it's an additional cost, but I think in the long run, I think that's the way they're going to have to go. You know, so, so when, so better start now. So I, I agree that, that I think the owners as well have to do a part, but they should not be the only entity that's, that's being, you know, included in this bill and saying, well, you must do this and nobody else gets, you know.
And, and I will at very least make sure that I share your concerns with Councilwoman Fisher. I'll make sure, you know, I'll send her a note to let her know what, you know, some of the things that the council has, has raised and some of the things that you're hearing from your area businesses, even before you do anything formally.
Okay, let's, let's pull up Jay Davis, she can speak if, if that's council's, well, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Yes, first, I did want to note that Ms. Fisher did try, or I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fisher did try and control for this a little bit. She said that any retailer that offers 20 or more carts.
Right, right.
So when it comes to very, very small businesses, there is some leeway there. I'm very happy to see that she was, you know, proactive in including that in there. I, for medium-sized like the co-op, that does still make it very, very hard, but she has tried to control for this a bit.
No, thank you for that.
Okay, let's see, Jay Davis, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Jay Davis, Greenbelt East. Greenbrier ends up with a lot of Safeway carts and we also get some, we used to get some from the Dollar, Dollar Store and so forth and so on, even CVS. And I know that when the manager, our manager would call Safeway or CVS and say, you've got carts over here, they say, no, we don't go pick them up. You just, you can bring them over whenever, have your, your guys bring them over, bring them back. And that happened with Giant. I'm sure that council has seen the back of Franklin Park by the dumpsters. At one point they had almost 20, 30, 40 shopping carts from Giant. And Giant finally went over and picked it up, but it, it was like pulling teeth. So it's the major stores, the major retail stores that have the problem. They have the, the money to be able to get a truck and go over and pick up if someone complains about something. The little stores, yes, that's a problem. And what you can do is, you know, you can make a suggestion that amendment would be a store with 20 carts or 40 carts is exempted from this. You could also say, I think what they were trying to make the, the major stores do was to put in some system that would keep the, the carts in, on their property. And that could be a variety of things, whether it's a return, you get a coin, or you have the, the wheels lock up and things like that. So that's, that's what they're really trying to push. But what you can suggest is exemptions by size or by number of carts or, you know, by a certain amount of profit, you know, they, they can show that they can't afford to put in or have the space to put in. I think the, the co-op store manager said that they don't even own the parking lot, so they can't control anything beyond their door. So I just think you need to do something. If you don't do anything, the bill's going to go through.
Well, thank you, thank you. Ms. McKinney?
I don't know if there's other questions related to this.
Didn't really see any other questions related to. Well, Ms., Mr. Orleans, did you have a question related to the shopping carts?
No, sir, I had my hand raised before you started talking about shopping carts.
What, what, should I, you know?
Go ahead and then I can ask my question.
Please.
References have been made to the final page of tonight's two-part agenda package, bond bills, and my question concerns that.
We haven't gotten to that yet, so we're not, we're not to that yet.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McKinney?
Mr. Carrington, you had mentioned a few just timeline-related items and things that we should be thinking about in preparation for this upcoming legislative session. And in particular, you also talked about when was a good time for the bond bills as well as other things to be talking to people and that should have been yesterday. I'm wondering if there's a way that you can lay out clearly that those timelines so that we can be ahead of them and not be behind in any way. So from here moving forward, it's going to move very fast, I understand. And so it would be good to have those kind of outlined so we know when they're coming. And then you had mentioned, you know, having our, our annual legislative dinner sometime in January, but if you're saying that prefiling is happening, wouldn't it make sense to have some sort of communication beforehand? And then I guess my question is, is there a benefit to filing early rather than later?
Those are all excellent, excellent questions. Let me, I'll, I'll address the end and work my way back. So it, it's philosophical for some folks. It, when you prefile a bill, you typically, they, they publish a prefile bill second, third week of December. This past year, they didn't release it until the day of session, which is why we were all so crazy this year because you have 680 bills being dropped on you on the first day of session and everybody else is introducing bills too. So you, it was just chaos in terms of the scheduling and the like. And when I say philosophical, if it's something that you're building support for, everybody kind of knows and you want to get it out there so people knows it's there and people can kick the tires and, you know, really have it all worked out by the time they get there in January, then, you know, you prefile. It's something you've been doing for years and you want to make sure that, you know, folks know it's coming again. However, if it's something that's going to be a little bit more controversial, you, do you really want to have a document out there for a couple of extra months for people to kick it, you know, to kick it and, and, you know, beat you up over it? So, you know, you may wait until you get to session to file, you know, one of those types of bills. And again, it's just philosophical. So it just depends upon what the bill is, what the subject is and what it's trying to do. In terms of making sure you guys are prepared, one of the things I do like to do is prepare a yearly timeline for my clients so that you know, Maryland is on a, it works on a flow, a, a, a system. And if you're not a part of that flow, that's when you don't get things because you're working outside the cycle. So when we have signee die, which is, you know, Latin for like the last day, which is the last day of the legislative session, as far as I'm concerned, the next day is the first day of the new legislative session. So we do, you know, everyone goes on vacation for the first couple of weeks after session's over because we've just spent 90 days of hell. However, by the first week of May, people are starting to have their spring conferences and then you get into the summer conferences. And all of that is about looking at what went right, what went wrong, what we're going to, you know, what do we want to do differently for next year? And so that's when you start making your plans in terms of, all right, we want to make sure we put this bill back in, or we got this little piece of this bill last year, so we got, you know, a half a loaf last year, let's go back this year and get the rest of the loaf. And that's, you know, that's something that people do as well. So that's when all that, that's supposed to occur during the summer conferences and symposiums and all the meetings that you have. And what's nice about that time period is that people don't have bullets flying overhead with, you know, the session actually being in motion and running to meetings and work sessions and getting to a vote and whatever. They don't have time to do the substantive policy work that sometimes is necessary to get through some of these issues. So we'll use that time for those reasons. And as I said, at the end of August, every year, that's when all the departmental budgets are due to the governor. So of course, if you have departmental. departmental requests, you want to get those things in in the early, you know, the spring and the summertime so that the cabinet secretaries and the like can, you know, if they like your ideas, include that into their budget requests. We also, you know, we know when the bill, the bill deadline submissions are. We know when crossover is gonna be, which is the magical date in Annapolis where if your bill passes over into the other chamber, at least you're guaranteed a bill hearing in that other chamber, which gives you, you know, a prospect for your bill passing. If you don't make it by crossover, unless it's a, you know, unless it's a leadership priority, that bill is probably gonna die in that session. So you'll get all of that and I'm looking forward to you actually knowing when hearings are gonna be and giving you the opportunity to testify. If you'll look in your packet that you got today that the Assistant City Manager is printing out, it gives you the traffic, I'm sorry, the transportation briefing on this Thursday, which I think is very important for, you know, if only one person could be there, somebody should participate in that particular activity. Mr. Mayor?
I was just gonna urge you, if you can provide us with, with a more detailed timeline or deadline dates for session coming through, that would be helpful. I think that's...
Absolutely.
I was gonna ask the same question. Right. You asked a couple of other questions. One, we, with the city manager, we, we discussed trying to set up a meeting with, with the delegation early on, and it was their desire to actually have this joint meeting on December the 3rd. But that was the specific intent. We really wanted to talk about not just our top two or three bond requests, but ideas that we had for bills that they might put in and their preference. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, now I add some context to that, that I understand that the delegation, particularly the Senator, had a convening of the mayors and the mayors took a vote to, to host one joint legislative dinner.
Brief meeting. I think Senator had something in mind from the very beginning. So, which is what happened last year as well.
And I'm just relaying just what my analogy is, we got to this one meeting, which it, it worked well last year. It worked well in terms of all the communities getting to understand the priorities and they were able to demonstrate support for, for priorities that were shared priorities. It also provided insights into the bond bills and the requests. And there was some discussion about, okay, well, what's gonna likely be more appealing and competitive? And that way it gives us an opportunity to see what everyone else is asking and kind of get a feel for that. So, I thought it was a very good collaborative process.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that maybe this year is gonna be more important to do that because we know that there are budget constraints. From what I hear is that the budget process for next year is gonna be brutal and not to expect bond money at the same levels of the current year. So, are we gonna ask for a million dollars for the municipal building? No. It's not gonna, something like that would...
That's kind of what I meant when, when I said...
I would ask. I'm not shy about asking.
I think there's other things. I think, I think we need elevators more.
About the municipal building for a million dollars, but...
The delegation, the Senator, I think they have a dollar amount in mind. And, you know, just keeping, the fact is, previously, several of the other municipalities in District 22 did not really have these conversations. So there was great favor given to the idea of having one, one meeting. Thought it went well last year.
Yes, and I think if, if we know we're going into a, a year with a budget constraint, maybe there's an advantage to the municipalities having the discussion and figuring out, okay, who has been underfunded for whatever period of time and who has a priority item and we can discuss those things and, and, and support each other. This, that's, I have taken this approach in my previous job in, in Ohio where there are communities that really needed a water pump or, or some critical infrastructure and they just couldn't get money for it unless the municipality that's around this municipality were willing to support their applications and give up some of their own public funding.
Okay. And you had a third question?
If I might add, I think that your, your Senate, your state delegation would really appreciate if, if you all did something like that because it takes a lot of pressure off of them if you don't have the municipalities competing with one another for the finite dollars that are available.
Right, because they have, they, they feel the pressure that they want to keep all the municipalities happy. And we're, how many municipalities in our district there?
In District 22?
Two.
I don't know, seven, eight?
Seven.
Seven or eight, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's around that.
That's a, a lot of municipalities to try to keep happy.
But you guys are the largest, that's most important.
Yes, thank, thank you.
There was a third part to your question?
I, I think it was answered, but I do have an additional question. We've been talking a lot about our legislative priorities, working with the upcoming legislative session on a, on a state level, but we haven't really talked a lot. We talked briefly about county advocacy. And, and so with our timeline, can you also include details on when we need to be just testifying, communicating, when are key dates within the county councils' process as well?
Sure. And, and understand some of these things are fluid. So, you know, we, we will find out at, you know, in real time and then we will share that with you. And regrettably, they don't always give you the heads up that you would like to be able to plan for this, especially with the challenges that you all have with your calendars. But we will, to the extent that we can, we will make sure that you know ahead of time, you know, when, especially for priority issues for us, you know, such as the sign monitoring, renters' issues, the, the cart issue. So, we, knowing those are your priorities, we'll make sure that we're paying close attention to when those upcoming hearings are, to give you a chance to weigh in. And we'll also, to the extent practical and, and I've had conversations with the city manager, assistant manager, every legislative body is a little bit different. So for some of the bodies that we work with, they just want the facts, you know, give us, you know, date, time, location, when, when's this meeting and, or, you know, what's the bill set, you know, what does the bill say, what's the synopsis? And then we'll have a discussion that will decide if we want to support it, oppose it, or take no position. I will try, you know, now in the analysis that we've talked about, to try to give you kind of like a, well, this is how I see this bill affecting Greenbelt and as to why you may want to support it or oppose it. So we will give you a little bit more analysis than we, than we've been providing. We, we kind of like switched on a little bit when we were presenting some of these things because we didn't want to, to, to make decisions for you.
Appreciate that. Hey, just circling, well, you, you said something about the, the MDOT, the roadshow, which is tomorrow. Our Director of Planning is going to be there. We're sending a letter. I've testified in the past, but I sort of got the, I wasn't really, I got the feeling that staff wanted to go and, and do that. So do you think it's important to have elected officials? I, I think it is.
I think it's always important to have elected officials, especially because, you know, not in this case, but you guys control budgets. And so that, people pay attention to people who control their paychecks. And so that's why your presence is impactful.
Got a conflict tomorrow. I don't know if you're available to, to go.
What, what time is it?
1:30. And you can, you can do, it's virtual.
Which is a little different, yeah.
Well, I mean, I, you know, the, the one upside to have us having to go through COVID is that it has changed it so that we can do hybrid models where that, you know, they refused to do so for so many years. So I think that that's really good for democracy. More people are eager to participate.
Let's just see what's going on. So just pivoting back before we move on and talk about bond and earmarks, just looking at this list of petitional, additional legislative priorities, we got some, a request or an inquiry from a resident about banning gas-powered blowers. And, you know, I think that's a longer-term priority. That's something that I'd like to see move forward, but I don't think it's gonna move forward this year. I think it's more of a two or three-year or something that would definitely be in place by 2030.
Well, I, I, just to add to that, I think you made a comment to John Lippert at the Advisory Board and Commissions Dinner, and so that was discussed about, about some short-term priorities for, between now and 2030. And so that was something that even before we got the email from that resident had come up at the Greenaces meeting last night. And so I suspect, I think that they have talked about that before and I think it may have been part of some broader recommendations, but I think we should actually expect a, a recommendation from, from Greenaces sometime before too long. I don't know the, the exact timeline because I think that is something that there were clearly some people on that, in that group that are very interested in that. So I think we can expect to see a recommendation from Greenaces sometime soon.
Although that Montgomery County has instituted a, and there, there are some things for the municipality to consider because I'm, I'm assuming that you have gas-powered blowers, yeah.
But, you know, by 2030, we won't. Probably. Hey, just looking at this list of, you know, number two, the priorities that we brought up. So the blowers, compostable utensils seems pretty good. Juvenile justice reform, certainly looking at the way juvenile cases seem to, to move forward or get referred is, is an issue. The mufflers. The food truck policies is something that I think it's kind of interesting. What, what I've seen and maybe the rest of you have noticed is there are a lot of food trucks that are popping up as, as permanent installations at gas stations. There's actually one down at the Exxon station at Hanover Parkway and Greenbelt Road and over in Berwyn Heights at the Extra. And it just seems to be a popular thing. But I, I wonder if, if that should be regulated a little bit more or if municipalities should be able to, to have a voice in, in the way that that happens. So...
So you're looking for a statewide bill, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, no, I, it's more like a county bill. Local or county. The civilian non-sworn approval for speed cameras, that's MML. The HOA Parking Enforcement Authority, I'm trying to recall exactly the nuances of that suggestion. I believe our local police don't really have the capacity or are not, are not able to actually go on a private property. Ms. Pope, did you put that forward?
You can't. I think they can if it's like, you know, an unregistered vehicle or if it's flat tires or something, then they can come in because that goes under city ordinance. If, because our parking lot's, it's a private parking lot. I think for anything else, it gets a little bit tricky. Yeah.
Right, they can't come in to just like somebody's double parked or something like that.
Right. I mean, if somebody's parked in the fire lane, I mean, of, of course, you know, that's one thing. Like, and like I said, vehicles unregistered, et cetera, that, that's something they can take care of. They're not, they can't take care of other things. Like, we had a car parked and it was covered up and, and it's actually not allowed to cover it up. It was unregistered, you know. So, but they were not allowed to lift up the cover.
Oh, right. See, the plate was expired.
So, see, so things like that, 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 there are some issues with that. And I think, you know, maybe there's a possibility that, that can be loosened up a little bit.
Right.
It'd be certainly helpful to the HOAs and condo associations for sure. Right.
Is that an issue in Greenbelt Station at all?
Um, I think so. I mean, the, I think there have been some questions about enforcement, but of course, we have the main streets in Greenbelt Station are, are city streets. It's the, the side streets. And I think some of the particular parking issues were on HOA streets and that was a bit of a challenge. I think that one has been, the one that was over by the apartments, I think that's mostly been resolved, hasn't it?
It, that, it does come up. So there's still, there's still some concern with parking on our city streets and how long specifically, like smaller commercial vehicles can park on those city streets. And then especially if it's a homeowner as well that is then parked on the HOA street. So I, I think it's worth looking at.
But that's more not that...
It's internal.
Well, but it's also not necessarily about, it's about what are the regulations for that parking, not about the police or the parking enforcement not being able to, it's just, it's not a violation as our city code is written. So I'm not sure exactly whether this is about, if this is about the HOA being able to do parking enforcement. The particular issue that came up during our walkthrough was more about the current rule allows the parking that residents find frustrating because it is a business that has a number of vehicles that is taking up a lot of spaces, but they're actually legally allowed to be parked there. They're just taking up more than their fair share of the parking spaces.
That's actually a, a Greenbelt. And I know that District Samron's already looking at some modifications to some of our, our parking ordinances that are in place. So that's actually internal.
But in terms of enforcing on the HOA streets where the, where it's the HOA's responsibility and not the city responsibility, there ha, it's, it, there haven't been as many in Greenbelt Station specifically.
Okay.
But I think throughout the city and the other... Any other section, there, there are issues. And I think it would be helpful, you know, if we can enforce general parking guidelines, rules on HOA and condominium associated, as long as you're in the city. I mean, it's still in the city, right? So, I don't, it needs to be worked out, I'm sure, but, but it would be very, it will be a positive, you know, for everybody.
And that sort of relates, you mentioned number of cars being parked in front of a resident. So that kind of relates to this home occupation business licensing, which is something that I suppose we could talk to the county about, but that would also be more so a city legislative priority as opposed to county.
It currently is a zoning issue and that, that's, that authority resides with the county.
One of the things that I'm working with a couple of other communities on is establishing what's called business districts, in which you then are able to make rules for the businesses themselves that are in that particular district. Just giving you, for example, like, you know, you could have business owners who are inconsistent with their operating hours, which, which affect other businesses. I mean, quite frankly, I'm here because you're here and I need your foot traffic and you need my foot traffic. And if you're not open, that messes up my foot traffic. So, you know, little things like that. But this could be a way in which you can address this, you know, how many vehicles per, you know, square feet you could have. I mean, you can come up with all kinds of creative things once you create a business district and give, give it rules and the like.
I, I think this one came up with in regards to homes, single-family homes, town homes that were operating businesses, whether, now, there were some that are pretty straightforward, the, the ones that are, are running mechanic shops.
Yes, exactly.
We have to kick that off to the county and the county follows up on special. There were, there was one complaint that we received that was a little more nuanced, whether the business activity happening, taking place in the town home amounted to, oh, sorry, whether it could be regulated under the county zoning code. And there's some home occupations that the county currently doesn't regulate.
Like maybe autography studio or music studio, things like that.
I'm not, I'm not sure of the details of it, but there, in one instance, in the one complaint that we received, that didn't amount to the county being able to investigate it. It, it had to be further, evidence needed to be gathered and, and it was quite tedious to get to the county to investigate it.
Got it, got it. I'm just going through this list to, you know, kind of get it off the table. The file, the last one that's listed here is inclusionary zoning and that, that's actually a request of the county. Montgomery County's had that for quite some time. So we, we as a body are very, very interested in trying to have a little bit more control as we talk with developers and builders over just being able to insist that there's housing for seniors or alternatives other than market rate housing. Is this a topic, is this continuing to be a topic that the county council is talking about?
It's a constant. You know, we, we are constant. I mean, as we all know that the nation is facing a housing shortage, just, just not in the state of Maryland. I mean, here in Prince George's County, and, you know, thankfully to the legislature and our governor, they really pushed forward last session with putting, you know, some really good packages together around housing. But, you know, it's not enough. We're gonna continue, we need to do more and more. You know, very encouraged with, you know, some of the plans I'm seeing about, you know, with respect to the relocation of the FBI and knowing that we're gonna have, you know, an influx of housing. But, you know, there is a stress between the development community and, and those who do not want to see any new development ever again. So we are, we are constantly in that, in that battle.
So these are the priorities that we discussed. If there are other ideas, we can put them on the table. I don't think this is, this is not gonna be ready for the agenda on Monday. So our next opportunity would be late in November to actually, well, we already kind of, we had a draft set and this was the draft.
Correct. And many of these carry over from the previous year. So for, I'm, from what I gather from, from council, that the six legislative priorities remain priorities.
Yes.
Right. So these other ones were just items that need to be fleshed out and, and we need, we would like direction from council. How do you want these to, to develop?
Yeah, and the only addition that I, I would really urge council to consider adding has to do with public safety and just provisions to assist us in recruiting police, most importantly, firing EMS personnel, recruitment and retention.
I'm sorry. And we have that in the joint, the joint priority, legislative priorities for the District 22, which are the juvenile justice reform, affordable housing, mental health and addiction support, environment... health and addiction support, environmental sustainability and justice, infrastructure, road, state road improvements, regional economic development and growth, and grants for recruitment and retention of police officers and will now add firefighters.
Mr. Carrington?
I mean, there was one other thing, last year we didn't get funding because we weren't allowed to use capital funds for feasibility studies, I think it was for the armory.
Yes.
So, my suggestion is we speak with our state delegation and ask them if they would go ahead and just do a little bit of horse string for us and actually get that put into either DHCD's budget or someone else's operating budget and then be able to give us a grant to do the feasibility study. That would be the way around that.
We funded it through ARPA funding.
Oh, well, you already took care of it.
There's additional work that we're going to need around the armory.
Well, yeah, but not for the feasibility study necessarily.
No, but for the, for future reference, that's one of the things that, you know, we can think about when, if you need to do this again, then we would try to do it under operating funds with one of the, you know, whichever relevant state agency and then, you know, then this way you will be able to use it for that purpose.
Might be worth a try, you know, we can use this ARPA money for something else.
No, I don't think, not too, too late now, we're not gonna.
But we have a long list of to-do things, so it would be nice.
But, Tim's like, oh, no.
We'll give Tim a heart attack.
It's okay, he'll survive, it's all right, he'll be okay.
So, we still have a little bit of flexibility, but this is a good, this is a good framework. I think we've got a lot of things on the table and let's go ahead and pivot and talk a little bit about bond bills and earmarks, I suppose.
Mr. Mayor, before we, if you.
Please, go ahead.
If you could, give me some time. I've been texting with Terry about the CTP plan and the meeting is at 1:30, it is in-person only, so.
They had a little link.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so if any council member would like to attend and provide testimony, we can provide talking points and we also have the letter that was submitted for council's approval that has the content and the city's position on the CTP.
I'll double check my schedule, I have a commitment that may shift.
My 1:00 meeting got canceled, but I'm actually running a webinar that may finish at 12:30 but may go long, so I'm not sure if I'd be able to be there in person by 1:30, but I can.
Staff is willing to go ahead, so we'll work this out tomorrow somehow. But if you could send the talking points tomorrow.
Okay, we'll do. Okay, sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. Hey, let's go ahead and talk about the bond bills. So, potential projects, you know, Mr. George, thank you so much for putting these together. Do you want to quickly move through them? I mean, I think we can all see them, those of us that have the information in front of us can see them. So, we definitely need some elevators. And of the three requests, I would probably put emphasis on the community center elevator. I have a soft spot in my heart and a passion to actually see some funding for gateway signage so that people who live in outlying areas of the city will know when they are in the city and when they're not. That's a relatively small amount there. The museum renovation project, I think we've already, I know we've already gotten bond bills for that in the past.
It's listed on the other page.
Hiker biker trail and $500,000. Greenbelt Station will mod on, oh, okay. And I'm not sure if that, and maybe Ms. Ruby would know if that is actually ready to, something that's going to move forward this year or not, I assume that it is. And Pepco streetlights.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure, please.
Can we call it something other than Pepco streetlights? Can we call it Greenbelt streetlights? Because you don't want people to have the impression that they're giving money to Pepco. I'm just.
So, how about streetlight conversions or acquisitions?
Something, anything else, I would just take their name out, I mean, I love Pepco, don't get me wrong, I'm just saying that you don't want somebody to sit there and, you know, be mad at them about something and be like, I'm not giving any money to Pepco. We lose rationality at certain points in the session, so.
Mayor, Tim?
Well, I would agree, it seems like the, the elevators seem like the looming big one and especially the community center elevator because there are so many people who use that facility and there are part, I mean, parts of the building that you have to have the elevators to get to, so that seems like.
It's also the oldest building of the three.
Yeah, so I think that would probably be one that personally I think would be, and I feel like that's one that you can, you can also make a good case to the delegation about why this is important, it's a really expensive big project and it's also really important to a lot of our residents who have mobility challenges, who need to be able to get up to all of those activities and things. I think, I mean, the structure, the structural renovation is also important, but I don't have a sense of which one is more urgent of those two. Wayfinding, I think that's a good thing, I do wonder if there are other places we could find money for that. We already got money for the Greenbelt Museum, I'm not sure they're going to give us more given that we haven't really progressed on that, that project yet. I mean, Greenbelt Station will want a hiker biker trail, of course, that's something I very much want to see completed as well. I think the challenge has been that it's continued to get more expensive as time goes on, so we need to find more, we've had to find more money for it than we originally thought. I think the streetlights, a lot of people are going to be asking for the streetlights, so that either makes it a more powerful ask because we all collectively together say, here's the benefit to all of these municipalities for giving us money to do the streetlights or it's, we're all asking for the same thing and they don't want to fund it. So, that one seems like it's kind of a bit of a trade-off, but I appreciate Mr. Carrington's comment about maybe calling it like streetlight acquisition or something. And conversion, yeah. But there's, I mean, yeah, and I also wonder if there aren't, there might be, because of the energy savings and therefore the carbon reduction, I do wonder if there would be other sources of funding for that too, if it's, if it's about being able to replace more energy-intensive light bulbs with more energy-efficient light bulbs, there may be some other funding we could apply for, for that from, yeah.
Yes, and there is one, the SOL grant allows for streetlight upgrades.
Council member?
Yeah, this is not a project on this list, but I have a question about the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. We had, well, we went on a tour of the facilities earlier this year, you know, we talked about how the long-term plan for that space was to renovate the, I want to call it office space, but sort of office space and front desk space so that it's more functional for the people who are working there. And, I mean, I, I just feel like we need to at least consider that project because that is a space that a lot of children and residents are in every day and it is a space that has not had any attention, that office space is really just not very usable for them right now. So, I just have a lot of concern about it and, you know, how we could possibly move that forward.
Suggestions? I'm going to turn around and answer. This gateway sign, it's something we talked about, council approved the funding for that, the project moved ahead, gradually we got the funding and we just ended up with one sign at the entryway to historic Greenbelt and that was not the intention of the project, so I really want to see that funding in there for two more signs somewhere.
I think I'd prioritize both the community center and Spring Hill Lake over signage, to be honest, for me personally.
Community center structural renovation, anybody has any more details on that?
Yes, there's a, there's a separation happening in the cinder block on the second floor.
On the second floor up at the dance studio area.
That should be maybe, maybe a priority as well.
What is your sense of, of those two community center projects, which one is more urgent?
Well. I don't know if Terry's on the line or Brian Kim's on the line. Did you say from an operations perspective? The, what would constitute a larger headache for me and what's the potential risk? I think the, the community center elevators going offline would put, would affect a lot of programming and it would be more immediate if it went bad versus the, the structural problems are a problem, but we don't have any concerns that the building's going to collapse or any, any major damage in that way. Now, the easy solution is not, you know, we're not going to spray foam the gap to cover the gap or anything like that, it's going to need something more, more significant than that, it's going to need a structural analysis and then the work.
I would say that the elevators feel a little more urgent to me just because we've had so many problems with them over just this past year and it's become, they've become a real hindrance for, to people accessing the building, accessing different classes and spaces, not having those available.
We saw the impact, the elevator went out for a few days and we had to actually shift all the programming, we had to cancel programs.
Yeah, I think the accessibility is probably a significant driver to make that a priority and then, like you were saying, programming, ultimately if we can't have programming, we also have to look at what the impact to the revenue coming in for those things that actually do pay for programming in that space and I don't know if we have to change or cancel that, if that impacts budget as well.
Okay, anything else? Okay. And this, you know, congressional earmarks also are something that we've had a little bit of success with, we got some money, did we not?
Our, our youth center roof request was supported by the federal delegation. We have not heard whether it's been funded, so do you know when we're going to hear, Tim?
Well, they initially funded it at only $250,000, we asked for 1.5 million. So, the thought would be, would we want to resubmit that next year depending on who wins in November and resubmit to see if we can get more, because 250 doesn't really help much. I mean, it helps, but not significantly.
So, one thing that I understand is, you know, we've got two, we've got two senators and we have a congressperson and other congresspeople that are also very friendly towards Greenbelt, so we need to actually submit. The senators have unlimited number of requests while the congresspeople are limited to 12, I think, per year. So, I, I think that we, if possible, we should maybe make a couple of requests before the end of the year because, you know, I think there's that period between when the elections happen and when the new representatives, representative is sworn in where the, so old, the previous senator, for example, might have some discretion and still be able to put some requests forward.
Duck period.
Yeah, lame duck. So, that would be Senator Cardin.
Cardin. Well, we'll put it on our, on our to-do list, reach out to.
I think we've largely seen this past year that, that both Senators Cardin and Van Hollen have been aligned on, on all of their things that they've been, yeah.
That's my understanding as well.
We'll reach out and explore those opportunities.
Just on that, on that, on that, at the CGI event, ribbon cutting last week, Senator Van Hollen's, I think it was legislative aide or I can't remember who it was, but gave both Kristen and I his card and said he was interested in coming here and learning more about what our priorities are, so maybe we should invite him here, talk about our priorities, so.
Do you remember if that was Roderick Lewis?
Yes.
Yeah, he's, he was, he was with Cardin's office for a number of years and now that, yeah, so, yeah, good guy, seems like a.
Yeah.
He's spoken with me as well.
So, in terms of actually determining which of these are our priorities plus the added one, I mean, would it, would it make sense to, do we want to do some kind of, you know, ranking among council so we see which ones rest at the top, similar to what we did for the ARPA projects? Do we think we, I mean, it also seems like, we were talking earlier about sort of having a conversation with other municipalities about sort of coordinating to a certain extent and seeing if that, and, and, you know, as Jay Davis points out, competition for bond bills will be fierce this year due to the predicted huge budget deficit, which I think that, that may be the case. So, I guess, how do we, how do we come to a, to a decision about which ones of these we want to put forward as bond bills?
Well, what I heard, just in listening closely, is there was a consensus around the community center elevator, not so much around the other elevators, but the community center elevators seem to be the top priority. Although I didn't hear quite so much, I think the, the streetlight acquisition and conversion priority, even though other municipalities will be asking about that, maybe that would be a joint one. Heck, you know, we could actually submit a joint, some bond bill request from the four cities or some, you know.
I guess we should talk about that tomorrow.
Those are the, and I passionately said, let's find some money for gateway signage, I really want to find some money for that, maybe not through a bond bill, but somehow that sort of slipped and, you know, I want to see that.
I would underline the emphasis that you place on the wayfinding.
Okay. So, we really only want to do, not wayfinding, gateway signage.
Signs.
So, I think I pretty clearly heard the one, I think we should only put maybe two, two or three forward, maybe just one. So, I don't think it's necessary to rank them all, in my opinion would be that we can kind of take the municipal building elevator and police department elevator out. The structural renovation, I didn't, didn't hear a big oomph about that either, these aren't very, these aren't very sexy bond bills, they're pretty, to the point. Zoom renovation, I think we already.
We already have, got some funding for that.
We can, I'm not really clear on how much additional funding we need for the biker hiker trail. I know that we have money to spend and we have to spend that.
Tim, do you have background on that?
Well, that, I meant the number Terry gave me, so the 500 came from her, I don't know if she's still on the line.
I don't think she was on the Zoom.
Is this in addition to what was already set aside because that price has gone up?
Yeah, pretty sure, because that's, there's money from the developer, there's also the TAP grant and then this, I think, is additional money needed.
So, I guess the question is, what is, like, we don't want that price to keep going up if we keep pushing that out, right? And if, if, and, you know, if all moves forward accordingly and we do get FBI, that becomes even more of a priority for that and if we push it out more, does that price point go up even more?
I don't know, I'd be supportive of putting that in as second highest priority, third priority, yeah. Any other thoughts?
I mean, I would, I would rank the Spring Hill Lake Recreation renovation over the streetlight acquisitions or the hiker biker trail.
There's a pretty good chance the Spring Hill Lake would not qualify. What we found out for a lot of the projects we're doing with the bond bill for the theater is the general maintenance and repair does not qualify, so a lot of the things we put in for the theater, we can't use the money for. So, like painting and renovating and new drywall, things like that, now if you put in a brand-new wall and like completely rebuild it, that might qualify, but if it's more of a, if you're just renovating the front and you're putting in a new, new office furniture and a new desk, that would not qualify under, and I'm actually looking at the regs right here, would not qualify under, but, but then again, if you do, if you change the whole design, if you put in a new wall and really rebuilt it, that would be, that would be an allowable use of the funds.
I mean, my understanding was that the renovations were extensive that it needed, but I could be wrong about that.
The renovations are pretty extensive that the staff has requested and it would be a rebuild and tearing out the wall.
But if it goes in the same place, I mean, you have to, I guess it really depends on what they want to do. If it's replacing what they have with, with new, then it would not qualify, if you're tearing it all out and completely restructuring it, that would qualify.
We just move forward with those four, staff can do some additional research and you can let us know whether or not that's feasible.
Want to go over the four again?
Yeah, the community center elevator, the streetlight acquisition and conversion, the hiker biker trail and the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center office space renovations, redesign.
Redesign, yeah, that might be a better word for that.
Okay. Okay. We're going to pause, any other questions or comments online? Yeah, Mr. Orleans, please.
I think it should be a simple question. Why are these called bond bills? They're requests to the legislature for money for all good things to do, but why are they called bond bills? The General Assembly does not issue a bond to fund, to respond to these requests, so why are they called bond bills?
That is what the legislature calls them, Mr. Orleans.
It's a practice, you know.
Okay.
Get you the address for the Senate president and call him and have a long discussion.
Well, Mr. Carrington, you know, thank you for your service, thank you for your hard work advising council. on legislative initiatives and how to move forward with things. I think you realize that the Maglav project and the situation with the firefighters in the county are of great concern to us, so any advice that you can offer us in addressing those concerns, those problems, we would appreciate it. But thank you for your work, and if we can, a timeline of deadline dates is something that would be very helpful.
And I'd like to thank all of you, as I said when I first came on, it's been a dream of mine to work with the city of Greenbelt. This is a wonderful community. I live right next door to you guys in Bowie. There's some exciting things, and there's some things I think jointly that Greenbelt and the city of Bowie, the Greater Chamber of Bowie, the Greater Chamber of Commerce and the like can work together with you all on some initiatives and seeking out additional revenue, being entrepreneurs, so to speak, as municipalities, because we're gonna have to do a lot more of that. And I'm looking forward to making sure we have better communication coming to the council so that you guys have a better idea of what's happening in real time and ahead of time, especially so that you can participate better in the process. So thank you all very much for this.
Thank you.
So at this point, let us shift to some information items, Mr. Someron.
The information item we discussed briefly is that we received word from the court that the case was dismissed. And I shared the court order with council, I'm primarily announcing it for the benefit of the public. The Greenbelt News Review already went public with it, so it's front page news.
Very disappointed about the place where we are, having our concerns not, not being addressed and not really having our day in court, so to speak, a chance to articulate the challenges that we see and to advocate public safety is one of the most basic things that council and the city administration is expected to provide. So these changes, temporary changes or permanent changes, whatever, we, we need our day in court.
Our concerns are dismissed, so that's the issue. They're just dismissing all these public safety concerns.
Frustrating is they're dismissing it because they say that we don't have any information to prove that there's a problem, but we don't have any information to prove that there's a problem because the county won't give us any information. So it's like, how do you, like, what's, what are we supposed to do about that?
Like a no win situation right now for us, you know.
Even worse is the question about standing, about if we are currently, our response times are better than some parts of the county, we don't really have standing unless our response times drop, that drives me crazy, you know, it doesn't make any sense. Yes, that's what I just said.
Has to drop lower, need to, lower than the other areas of the county, basically.
Race, race to the bottom, and that's not what.
Are we gonna appeal, are we gonna appeal that decision or what are you gonna do?
We're weighing our options right now.
You can appeal it to a higher court, right?
I don't know if council wants to speak about that in a public setting.
I think we need to chat about it before, we quickly chat about it before, so.
When you say you want to quickly chat about it, you want me to disclose the options that you have?
No, what I, what I was going to do is, we're going to go into an executive session later, and I think I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda so we can vote on it up or down.
I, what we advertised for the special session was related to the city manager's evaluation, that, or the closed session tonight, which I think we actually don't need at this point because, although I think Mr. Someron has completed his, his self-evaluation, council has not completed their part yet. So, I don't think that we should, I don't think that it's appropriate for us to add that as a closed session topic without having advertised it. I would suggest instead that after our advisory board interviews next week, we do a closed session and that allows us to advertise it more properly as well as potentially have other, our legal councils available to advise us on options. I am not particularly comfortable changing the closed session topic at the last minute without having advertised it. And I don't actually think that we need the closed session tonight.
Well, thank you, thank you, but I am going to make that motion because we do have the authority to do that. At that time, we can discuss it or debate it before voting. Was there any other, go up, please.
I just wanted to comment, Mr. Martinez is here.
Yes.
So, I don't know what that means, does that mean it's just gonna be dismissed?
No, he's going to participate.
Okay, in our closed session, okay.
There was a, you had an.
I did have an information item, I'm sorry.
But before you do, any other comments from council about Mr. Someron's announcement?
We're just all really, really disappointed that we didn't get the chance to make our arguments in court. Or didn't, at least not yet, we still have some options, but.
Options, correct.
Yeah.
We didn't get the opportunity yet, shouldn't we?
Okay, council member Poppy.
I went to, I'm a member of the Friends of the Greenbelt Library, we had our regular monthly meeting this week. And this week, the new CEO of the library, Dr. Mark Winston, attended. Nothing really happened, he just sort of came and wanted to meet the friends and know the kind of work that we're doing, and it was really nice. And Karen, what's her name, Karen Luoma was there as well, who's the circulation director for our region, and she mentioned to me at the end of the meeting that they're still waiting on the storybook walk. They haven't been able to get a contractor to actually do the work, and I was like, we know all about that. They've had, just had a lot of delays, so they're putting that out to another RFP to try and get another contractor to do it. So, just in case anyone was wondering, like, where's this storybook walk that we were supposed to see months ago? They are really trying to, to get it done, and they did, they have purchased like the books and the laminators and like they have what they need. They just need, you know, a professional to install it. And then the other thing I wanted to just tell you guys, because I know how the city feels about the tugwell room, is that the Friends just purchased some new flat storage cabinets for maps and posters and some new file folders and some new vertical files for that collection. So, just to let folks know, like, the, you know, it's continuing to be maintained and storages, preservation is continuing. And the Friends of the Greenbelt Library are helping to do that, so.
Hey, that updates really appreciated, the folders and the file, flat file holders, those really are needed.
And they're really expensive, actually, they're like thousands of dollars.
They are, and we shouldn't necessarily have to purchase them, so for the Friends doing that, that's, that's a good thing. And Mr. George with the story walk project, that money is committed, so this RFP or additional work, would that have any impact on the ARPA funding? It's okay.
We will have to make sure that a contract is signed to obligate it and then we'll be okay beyond twenty-four. So since we're not gonna get it done or not have a contract this, but we may have to do another contract with the library system and obligate the money to them and then they can spend it beyond, well, that's good information to have since we're getting close to the end here.
Okay, I can, I can connect you with Ms., I mean, you probably actually already have her contact information, so, but if not, I can send it to you.
Yeah, send it along, the gentleman we were working with is gone, and then I know Greg's been working with new folks, but if you could pass it along, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll do that, happy to do that.
Okay. Hey, and so, information item with the calendar, my take is on the fourth, that should be a work session. I was talking with Mr. Someron and the city clerk, and we had a couple of suggestions. I, I'm very interested in talking with, sitting down with Mr. Mason, our new economic development manager, he's really hit the ground running. And I know that Mr. George and Mr. Someron have fleshed out, and the rest of the staff have fleshed out some ideas and concepts, and also the contracting, the consulting firm that's putting together information, so I suggested the fourth. What, we talked about it, what did we put down for the fourth?
We didn't set a date. We talked about doing it in December, the dates that were available. The concern we have was that it was gonna be so far out to have your input in the economic development plan, so we wanted to do it earlier. Challenge we have is there isn't anything available between November fourth and that December eleventh timeline.
Right.
So, and I don't know if November fourth, it might be too fat, too soon, what do you think, Tim?
We had talked about, I want to bring this up, we had talked about doing, anything doing paired up or three, three-person interviews with the, so it wouldn't be a full retreat because we just don't have the time, but it is necessary to get you all engaged. So have the consultant come out and interview council members two or three at a time, not four, so it's not immediate in that way. I mean, if it's one at a time, that's fine, they'll be here for two or, so the, those first three, that first week of November, they're gonna be on site the whole week.
Right.
Some of you will be out of town, some of you won't, and we could do two- or three-person interviews over those, over the fourth and the fifth. For those who work, we could do some in the evening, accommodate everybody's schedule as much as possible, and that way we'd have, we'd get that initial input. There'll be lots of other opportunities to have the body have full input, but if you all want to get in on, at the very beginning, which is where we really want your input, doing it as two- or three-person interviews with the consultant and staff, that's, we were looking at the first week in November for that.
Okay, well, that makes good sense. Also, you know, if, depending on what comes up in the next week, week and a half, we can always do a brief special meeting if there are some decisions and actions that need to be taken as opposed to a full meeting. That's also something on the table. Are there other suggestions?
Yeah, I, I don't know if this seems to me on the fourth, but I, I'd like us to do a work session on local legislative priorities, like here in Greenbelt, like legislation that we as a council would like to work on. And I think a work session would be a good place to do that, you know, many of us have ideas about things, I know you do, I do. So I think, you know, this doesn't have to be the fourth, I don't know if people would be ready for that, but I would like us to do that sometime in the near future because, you know, this is our job.
Now's the time.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my question is to Tim, then, then if we had the fourth available as we could have as a work session, would it be better to do just a council discussion all at once if that's already the week that they're going to be in town? Or would it be better to do more one-off interviews spread out?
Either one works, I mean, it's really up to the city manager and the city council to decide what you all want to do with that meeting slot. So that meeting slot was available, you could, you could use it for that purpose, but if you have other purposes for, I know the meetings are really tight, we could accommodate, you know, smaller person interviews during that week.
And here in Tim, we could do the retreat with the consultant on the fourth, and it'd be primarily to provide feedback to the consultants, do that, that retreat format conversation. But we would not be in a position to cover the economic development strategy as we have discussed with John, what is John Mason doing? How is, how are we pushing the economic development strategy? So those are two different conversations.
I can appreciate that, so let's, let's hold the date for that. I do agree with council member Poppy that we should have some additional conversations because also with PG CMA, their, their activities are going to be moving ahead, and you're one of the co-chairs, you the chair or the co-chair?
I'm the co-chair.
Okay, along with Upper Marlboro.
Along with Mayor Franklin from Upper Marlboro, yes.
Right, right. So I think that discussion does need to take place.
Is that something that would be compatible to actually cover some of both topics? I mean, we got, we covered two topics tonight, if, I don't know how long you feel like the conversation, the, the, needs to be, as we were talking about, but it could be, you know, an hour on one and an hour on the other, and, and actually cover a little bit of both on November fourth.
And that would be up to council, I'm usually well caffeinated for meetings.
I don't know, I think the talk with the consultants, you know, would probably, interviews and retreat would probably go at least an hour and a half, maybe two hours. And, you know, the conversation about.
It doesn't have to, this is the thing, it is not a virtue to have long meetings.
I don't like having long meetings, Kristen, I just know that there's business that we need to do, and I want to give adequate time.
We'll be supportive of what council wants to do.
I would propose that we try to do a little bit of both, have some of the conversation about local legislation, at least some, some additional brainstorming, because I'm not sure, I think if it's just an initial conversation about legislation, it's not necessarily going to be lengthy because we're just coming up with ideas and coming up with a priority list, because all of those individual legislation ideas are going to require fleshing out, and that's not going to be, if it's just, that seems, and then maybe we try to do that in forty-five minutes and the other in an hour and fifteen or an hour and a half.
And that was my thought on how the work session tonight was gonna go, so, and here we are.
We're already at two and a half tonight, too, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can be efficient if we're clear about what our agenda and their objectives are for each of those topic areas. I, I agree, I think we can keep it succinct if we know exactly what we're trying to get out of that meeting. So it may make sense to try to do two in topics on one night.
Well, you know, if that's council's will, I think that both subjects could take a little bit, being clear on exactly where we want to end up, we'll take preparation and good context and good facilitation as well, so.
So, it sounds like the two topics, and then, and so then I guess we just need to have it on the consent agenda for Monday to change, to confirm that that's not a regular meeting, I guess. I don't know if we need to like formally approve that, because I think we'd left it open as regular meeting or work session.
We did. But let me just say this again, and I'm not, staff will have to let me know, let us know. It does seem like a long time is going to lapse between, until our next meeting after Monday. So if there are some topics that we need to take action on, I want to leave open the contingency of a special meeting if there are a couple of items that we need to act on. Mr. Someron, is that a strong possibility?
I don't know what the possibility, I'm, right now, in my head, I'm working out what you need to do to approve the, the meeting for the fourth. And that, we would put that on the meeting schedule for the twenty-eighth, and that gets approved by council on the twenty-eighth. So that would be the approval process for that. So, we would, we would draft the two topics on the agenda on, for the twenty-eighth. Council can certainly amend it at the council meeting on the twenty-eighth, and council could decide whether that's gonna be one topic or three topics.
So, you could have on the twenty-eighth a more detailed agenda so that we can make a decision on whether or not it goes on the fourth, is that what you're saying? Right, exactly. Yeah.
Right, but we don't control the agenda for the second topic. We would control the agenda for the first topic.
Understood, yeah, but for the first, I feel like we need a little bit more detail, we were talking about it now, but what exactly are we gonna do on the topic related to the economic or business development stuff? So if you are drafting that, we will be able to see on the twenty-eighth whether or not it is in fact hefty and it could potentially take the whole meeting, and then we can make the decision about that on the twenty-eighth on whether or not it is a sole meeting or something else.
So that, that's a retreat and the consultants would be actually talking with us.
It is more of a retreat style format. The questions have already been drafted and there's, we reviewed it two weeks ago, and there are questions about vision, about strengths, what do you believe the strengths of the city are? Do you remember the number of questions, Tim?
I'm a reporter, but it's, yeah, so the, the thought for that, this first meeting is, it's not gonna be a deep dive in economic development and marketing and the plan. It's really setting the council's vision for what you all would like to get out of this effort. So it's really a, it's a very high-level discussion, we'll have a lot of other discussions where, once they have data and they, and they're gonna give us some findings where you all are gonna really dig into the numbers. But this is just to get your thoughts and vision, what do you all want to get out of this plan, what do you, what do you hope to achieve? Really at the thirty-thousand-foot level, so I would see it as more of an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour, because we're not, they're not gonna be presenting anything to you in terms of data, they won't have any data collected. That will happen at the next meeting. This first meeting is to get your initial vision as they head out on this journey to know where you, what you all are thinking and what you, you all would like them to pay attention to. There'll be another meeting where they're, where they're gonna come back with range of data and they're gonna have all sorts of, you know, place right AI and all that kind of thing to get into later. That's why I think maybe Ms. McKinney's point is, well, taken, I think you probably could split it fifty-fifty and I think you'd have a good session.
Okay.
Now get these questions ahead of time, so we can, maybe already to speed up the process.
Yeah, yeah, we're going through and, and they, they did some revisions to the questions. I haven't had a chance to sit down with the city manager to go through the revisions, and once we get those out, we get put those forward to you all, so you all have a, a chance to review them before, and, and they'd even suggested that, that way you all come into the meeting kind of with a knowledge base of what they want to talk about, we'll have a more productive session.
I would also like to point out that the gap between regular meetings between October twenty-eighth and November eighteenth is only three weeks, which is actually not an abnormally long time between regular meetings. Sometimes we have two weeks, sometimes we have two weeks in, but actually, just as often, we have three weeks between the, the second meeting in one month and the first meeting in the next month, so that's not to say there couldn't be something that comes up, but because of the shifting of the meetings because of the, the November eleventh holiday, it's actually, it's only three weeks in between meetings. it's actually, it's only three weeks in between meetings.
There's just a lot of things going on right now. So let's move on. You know, I, I think I will defer adding an executive session. Would be helpful to perhaps have our legal counsel available to chat. So at this point, let us go into the executive session. I hereby call the special meeting to order.
I would like to discuss and actually ask Mr. Martinez if we actually need to have a closed session before we even bother to go into the special meeting because it, it was my impression that we did not actually need that tonight because this, the city manager's evaluation, we're not ready for the next step. And I'm not sure what the purpose of having a closed meeting relating to that. And so I don't think we need to go into a special meeting and go into a closed session. We advertised it, but I don't think it's necessary.
I do think it's necessary. I chatted with Mr. Martinez. I think there's a couple of things we just need to talk about, process. It won't take long. So.
Let's go ahead and do it then.
I hereby call this special meeting of the Greenbelt City Council to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Nissu?
Here.
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Here.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
I'm here.
May I, Tim?
I move that, sorry, I don't actually have the, the. I move that council go into closed session in accordance with Section 3-305B1 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, one to discuss the appointment, performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The purpose of this meeting is to address, is the, to discuss the city manager's evaluation process. In addition to council, city manager Someron and Dwayne Martinez, a director of human resources, will be in the session. Note that council will not return to open session following this closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.